Basine?
Here.
Hampson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel? Jordan?
Here.
Ralston?
Here.
Martin?
Present.
Second.
Yes. Okay. Move that the school board and council go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record during the hearing of a student's appeal of a disciplinary decision pursuant to subsection 2 of the above cited code section and consultation with legal counsel to obtain legal advice during the hearing of a student's appeal of a disciplinary decision pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the above cited section, code section. Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you everyone, and we will go into the superintendent's conference room for the meeting.
Move that, Madam Chair, move we come out of executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton.
A resolution certifying an executive meeting of the school board of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board of the city of Norfolk that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore it be resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the city of Norfolk. Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I have a recommendation. In the disciplinary matter heard today, I move that the board impose a long-term suspension of 364 days and allow the student to attend Madison in person during the period of suspension.
Can I get a second? Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone, for the time spent to make this decision.
Madam Chair, I move that we enter an executive closed session.
Thank you. Anyone second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Ms. Tanner, please read the motion.
Move that the members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board of the city of Norfolk pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are discussion of specific personnel on today's regular personnel agenda and a separate matter concerning a specific employee, discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A2 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is discussion of specific students on today's regular student support agenda, consultation with legal counsel, and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where discussion in open session would adversely affect the school board's negotiating or litigating posture in consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 2.2-3711A7 and 8 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are those set out above in subsections A and B of this motion, and briefing by staff members and advice of counsel regarding restricting firearms on real property other than schools used by the school board, the intimidation of specific personnel and school board members, and the possible continuation of masking requirements on real property controlled by the school board and school buses. Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you. We'll reconvene in the superintendent's conference room.
All right, Madam Chair, I move that we exit executive closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Well, resolution certifying an executive meeting of the school board of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board of the city of Norfolk that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore it be resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the city of Norfolk. Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Okay. I call the business portion meeting, uh, business portion of our meeting to order. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Here.
Hampson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Ralston?
Here.
Martin?
Present. Okay. All right, good afternoon and welcome to the business meeting of the Norfolk School Board on this sunny, now dark, day in March. Hopefully, the sun will be out on Friday when we have our teacher workday and students' day off. But before we start thinking about the long weekend ahead, we have a lot to cover today. We're hitting all the hot topics, the 22-23 academic calendar, the educational facilities planning recommendations, the adoption of next year's school budget, as well as providing an, hopefully, acting on, providing an employee appreciation bonus. So I want to thank those who attend, who are here in person, and those who attended our public budget hearing in December, those who attended the public hearing on educational planning recommendations last, at our last meeting, and additionally, we've heard from many community members through surveys, emails, and of course, during public comments in our business meetings, and welcome you all who are here in person today, and we'll be sharing your views with us, and with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Let's see. Number two. All right. Adoption of the business agenda, can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the business agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. We'll go through a full process of offering amendments, but I would just like to ask if we would consider a couple of things. One, moving the adoption of the school board's budget ahead of the unassigned fund balance and the appreciation bonus. If I understand it correctly, the resources identified in those two items could be sources for the budget, and so I would think we would discuss the budget first, the needs, and the resources that we have available, which then may impact the other two items versus the other way around. And then the second request is under 7.05, where we have the educational facilities planning, that we would consider each of the educational facility planning items as separate voting actions rather than a group as a whole. So those are the things.
The opposition to, let's start with number one. So you're saying you'd like to move 7.05?
7.06.
No, the first one you said about the budget.
The budget, right. So right on mine, it shows that the adoption of the school board's budget is 7.06?
Oh, I have 7.05.
7.05.
It's 7.05. So you're saying to move that?
Is it different on board docs?
I have on board docs it's 7.06.
So I have this version.
I don't, I'm just going by what's on.
There's one version here, and then there's a different version that is on board docs, but either way, I think.
The one on board docs is the official one.
We'll go with board docs.
7.05.
Because this is administrative copy, really.
Okay. So move one point, or 7.06 to become 7.03, correct?
Yes, ahead of, yes.
Okay, and then.
And other two after.
7.03, and then, um, the employee appreciation bonus becomes 7.04, and the appropriation of unassigned balance fund becomes 7.05. And then, the educational facilities planning motions to be considered separately?
Yes.
Which I do believe we are, yes, we'll do that.
Okay.
I mean, unless there's any opposition, I'm sorry, I want to open it up. We're good?
Do you want by the number and we'll look again, too sorry, because mine's a different sequence here.
I'll do my.
What's 701?
So, so 7.01 is the financial report. 7.02 is the academic calendar. 7.03 will become the adoption of the school board's budget. So that means the appreciation bonus and becomes 7.04, the appropriation of unassigned funds becomes 7.05, and leaving the educational facilities, or then, yeah, the educational facilities planning stays as 7.06. Everyone got that?
And then, Madam Chair, one question of clarification. So on, on board docs, under the consent agenda, it shows two items dealing with mask requirements? Should they, are we, is that in the consent agenda, and if so, can we include what the motions are, or are those discussion, decision discussion agenda items that are being dealt with?
I think that it needs to be pulled out of the consent agenda because.
I was going to ask about that.
6.04 and 6.0, I'm sorry, you know what, I don't have it up, I don't have my screen up, so tell me what it is on the.
There's one proposed resolution that covers both matters, and that should be pulled out of the consent agenda, I think, so it can be voted on individually.
So, aren't we glad we, we go through this process? So, Ms. Tanner, item 6.04 and 6.05, which is, 6.04 is mask, mask requirements on school transportation, and 6.05 is mask requirements for staff, should be pulled out and combined, and.
Voted on separately.
You can add it to the decision discussion agenda as 7.07.
Okay.
Got it? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, and please call the question?
Okay, you gotta hold on just one second.
Okay. When you're ready. We're waiting on Ms. Tanner.
Just turn up your microphone. He was the only person I heard. I'm not that old.
I don't think we have the ability to turn them off.
Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay. I'd like to introduce our student representative, Ms. Karma Johnson, who is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms., we have our student musical performance. The first grade students from Granby Elementary School.
Ruffner Middle.
Oh, Ruffner Middle, sorry.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Mr. Clanton, school board members, Dr. Birdsong, administration, and guests. My name is Zach Clerksby, and I'm the Senior Coordinator of Music Education and Theater Education for Norfolk Public Schools. In March, we celebrate Music in Our Schools Month. Music education is a vital component to Norfolk Public Schools' commitment to supporting the holistic development and growth of children. I want to take a moment to thank each of you tonight for your continued support of music education in our school system. I also want to take a moment and recognize Norfolk Public Schools' music scholars of distinction. These students auditioned and were selected to participate in various all-district, all-region, and all-state music ensembles, or recently had their own signing day committing to a college or university with a focus on studying music. Lastly, tonight, I'd like to feature a combination of orchestra and band students from Ruffner Middle School in their performance of Sing, Sing, Sing by Benny Goodman. This music was recently performed as a tribute to Jazz Music and Black History Month. Thank you once again for taking the time to feature the work of our wonderful student musicians.
Me miss live entertainment so much, and I'm with, just looking at that list of the music scholars of distinction and hearing them play, it just, I'm always so amazed by the talent in our district and, and the leadership that cultivates that talent, and we're just so privileged to be able to have the benefit of hearing our students play. I can't wait till they're in here in person. So thank you, Ruffner Middle. Okay, up next, we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Birdsong, go ahead.
Good evening, Dr. Martin, Mr. Clanton, members of the board, and members of our community. I'm happy to present to you the wonderful things that our students have been able to accomplish since the last school board meeting. As you know, we have very brilliant and talented scholars, and we'd like to showcase their talents, and so without further ado, I'm asking Channel 47 to show the video.
Maury High School Orchestra students kicked off Music in Our Schools Month by welcoming singer-songwriter and instrumentalist Kishibashi to their school. Bashi, whose real name is Karu Ishibashi, is a 1994 graduate of Maury and was in town to perform with the Virginia Symphony Orchestra. During his visit, he performed several of his songs, answered numerous questions, and even let the students come up on stage to get a closer look at his musical equipment.
I thought it was really great. I loved seeing, like, a more unorthodox approach to music as opposed to, like, the classical focus that's generally emphasized, and I thought it was really cool seeing, like, a different kind of music than you would have expected. Like, the loop pedals were something that really surprised me, and I didn't know that you could do all that with just, with just a couple pedals and a single instrument.
Well, I volunteered to play his violin with the little buttons, so I thought that was kind of cool. It's definitely harder than it looks, but I thought it was nice to have that opportunity. Honestly, I tried pressing one of the buttons, but it's, like, really hard to multitask, so, other than that, I also noticed that, like, his violin was really cool. It had five strings instead of four, so that's different than what I play, because I also play the violin.
I like to perform at high schools and, like, I like to perform with students, you know, so I kind of bring my, I kind of show them what I do, and then I, I answer their questions, and I kind of encourage them to, to believe in the power of music. It's important to, to talk to students about music, because, you know, their, music has such a role in our lives, you know, the arts, because it's like, it kind of, it's a way to heal, it's a way to connect with our own humanity, so I think to be able to, to encourage that, to make it a part of their life is something that I, I like to do, and then also, if there's future musicians out there, to, like, encourage them that, you know, this is, just stick with it. It takes a lot of dedication, but you can do it.
Fifth grade students in Carly Kinsey's art class at Richard Bowling Elementary are spending Youth Art Month creating their own identity masks. After making the masks out of paper mache and painting them, these young artists worked diligently to find images to put on the masks that symbolized their inner and outer identity. Getting students to reveal part of themselves through their artwork keeps them actively engaged and excited about art.
I love art. I love drawing, I love cutting ourselves, I love coloring, I love working with, I love working with my friends. Art is the power of creativity, and I love creating things.
Art is important for so many reasons. I think some of the reasons I enjoy the most are, are the creativity aspects. It teaches you that there's not just one right answer. You can come up with all different solutions to a problem, and it, it really helps students to, to represent themselves and be able to say that without using words.
We get to draw, we can paint, we can make stuff that, like, we can make stuff that technically tells us who we are. We can, like, share stuff with the class, tell them about, like, what do we do, like, you know, like, what do we paint, so portraits, portraits, like, you can tell them the colors we like.
I like art because I can show my feelings. Well, it's important because some people, they're afraid to show how they feel, so you can show it through your art without being afraid to show.
For the first time in three years, NPS juniors and seniors got an exclusive look into the historically black college and university experience at the MIAC College Fair at Chrysler Hall. Eight colleges and universities from the Mid Eastern Athletic Conference, as well as representatives from various Greek letter organizations, were on hand to inform students about opportunities upon graduation. Students learned about different majors the schools had to offer, campus life, and could even receive onsite admission. Winter sports season has wrapped up, and some of our student athletes earned some prestigious accolades. Granby High had two wrestlers who placed all-state in the Class V tournament. Sophomore Michael Cuffy placed sixth in the 160-weight class, while freshman Leonard Ashley finished second at 132. Track and field provided the district with a couple of state championships. At the Class V State Meet, Norview's Imani Shaw took home the gold in the high jump, the senior won with a leap of five feet, six inches.
It feels great, you know? I've really been working for it this year, could have got it last year, but it's okay, because I got it this year, and I'm gonna get it again for outdoor. Oh, I jumped up on the mat, and then Jalen ran up to me, and she jumped on me, and I was like, I really won, like, I was, I was like shocked, and I wanted to cry, but I was like, I'm not gonna cry.
Shaw also placed third in the triple jump. Maury's Carlson White also took home first place in the 55-meter dash with a time of 6.35 seconds. Along with teammates Nadaria Celestin, Michael Mohammed, and Brian Rasko, White took home a second title in the 4x200-meter relay. They achieved a school record with White as the anchor leg.
I kind of already knew what I was gonna do when I was going into it. I seen who was behind, so I knew I couldn't try to burn out too early, so I think I timed it at the right time, and when I caught him on the last back stretch, I was saving my breath, and, yeah, we came out with the win.
Others who made it to the podium, Granby's Ryan Harris, who placed fifth in the pole vault, fourth in the 1,000-meter run, and fifth in the 1,600. Norview's Jalen Winderhill was third in the long jump. Maury's Diamond Baker also finished third in the shot put. Granby's Kayiv Jones placed fifth in the high hurdles, and Maury's Brian Rasko was fifth in the 500 meters. In the Class V State Meet, Booker T. Washington's Swain Clennan was fourth in the 300 meters, and Natasha Tate was fifth in the 55-meter dash. Congrats to the Norview girls' basketball team for making it to the state semifinals. Winning the Eastern District and knocking out eight-time defending state champion Princess San in the state quarterfinals were just some of the accomplishments this past season. Norview finished with a 20-6 record.
Dr. Martin, that concludes my video report.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. It's so exciting to see these students, scholars accomplish so much, and look forward to seeing where they're gonna go. Awesome. All right, well, up next, we have our clerks' report. Ms. Tanner, what do you have for us today?
Madam Chair, the clerks' report notes the following: Observances from March, Music in Our Schools Month, Youth Art Month, National School Social Work Month, and it's a proclamation and board docs for your review. Read Across America Day was March 2nd, School Social Work Week was March 6th through the 12th, and National School Breakfast Week was March 7th through the 11th. And then also, Madam Chair, as we just witnessed through Channel 47's great video, a lot of our sports recognitions were shared with us tonight, but there are some other ones here that were given to us for all of the high schools, so I'll try to do a quick run-through some of those. Again, we saw Maury High School's boys' basketball team made it to the state finals and represented Maury with great sportsmanship and skills. They are Region 5B champions, and Coach Brandon Plummer was named Coach of the Year. Brian Alexander is the Player of the Year. Brian Alexander is the Player of the Year, First Team, and Cameron Jones-Hood was selected to the First Team. Congratulations to the entire Maury Commodore basketball team. For indoor track, Region 5B, Damon Baker got first-place shot. Carlson White, first-place 55-meter dash. The girls' team came in second place, the boys' team came in third. Carlson White in the 300-meter came in first place. Nadaria Celestin came in second place, Michael Mohammed, third place. Brian Roscoe came in first place, Heaven Hall, third place, Christine Fitzgerald, second place. Heaven Hall, again, third place in the 300-meter dash. Mary Ellen Nguyen came in first place in the 1,000-meter run. Hallie McMurty, excuse me, came in second place. Bradley Malcolm came in third. Girls' 4x200 relay came in second place. The girls' 4x400 relay came in first place. And girls' 4x800 relay came in second place. And Heaven Hall, again, shot put, she came in second place. 4x2-meter relay team came in first place and the 4x4 relay team came in second place. For state Class V, Carlson White came in first place in 55-meter dash. The boys' 4x2 relay with Michael Mohammed, Brian Roscoe, Carlson White, and Nadaria Celestin came in first place. And the boys' 4x4 relay with Levante Bond, Trevon Cannon, Michael Mohammed, and Brian Roscoe came in third place. For the swim team, for Region 5B, Katie McCullough won girls' 50 free. Jackie Sheniman won the girls' 100 back. And the boys' 200 free, Nikita Kobzar won second place. And the girls' 200, it's a whole lot of students, y'all.
Right.
Um, 200.
Worth noting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I just want to tell you that while I keep reading these, uh, Jackie Sheniman won first place in the girls' 100 free. Katie McCullough came in first place. Boys' 500 free, Nikita Kobzar came in first place. The boys' 200 free medley, Alex Halberg, Gabe Kennison, John Allen Stillwell, and Nikita Kobzar came in second place. The girls' 200 free medley, Katie McCullough, Casey Dean, Jackie Sheniman, and Lizzie Dixon came in second place. The boys' 100 back, Patrick Stiles came in second place. Girls' 100 back, Jackie Sheniman came in first place. And the boys' 400 free with Brendan Holland, Alex Halberg, Patrick Stills, and Nikita Kobzar, they came in third. And the girls' 400 free, Jackie Sheniman, Bianca Alsoorenden, and Katie McCullough and Lizzie Dixon came in first place. That was for Maury High School, so congratulations to Maury. Let's give them a round of applause.
Yeah, good job.
Next, we have Norview High School with the girls' basketball team going to the state semifinals. And of course, uh, the voice from Channel 47 said they knocked off top seed Princess Anne. And they're the Region 5B runner-up. Congratulations to Coach Jonathan and his team for a great season. With the girls' indoor track and field, Imani Shaw, as he mentioned, was state champion, girls' high jump and third in triple jump. Jalen Winderhill, third in state in long jump. And wrestling, Aiden Martin, in the 32 pounds class rate, was third, Region 5B. The one-act play, they came third in super regionals. And in forensics, first place in super regionals for Duo Series, Serious Interpretation, next on the state. So, congratulations to Norview. Washington High School girls' basketball team made it to the 3A Region Tournament. Lakira Whaley was First Team All-District, Second Team All-Region 3A. Kamora Hurst was Second Team All-District and Honorable Mention in All-Region 3A. The boys' basketball team made it to the 3A Regional Tournament Quarterfinals Round. Egypt Nelson was Second Team All-District, Second Team All-Region 3A. And De'Tuan Johnson, the Second Team All-District. Congratulations to the following members of the track and field program for placing at the 3A A Indoor Regional Championship Meet. Suazan Clennan won the 300-meter dash, finished second in the 55-dash. Natasha Tate won the 55-meter dash, finished third in the 300-meter dash. Amaya O'Neil won the high jump, finished seventh. Jermaine Jones won the 55-dash. And then also, the girls' 4x200-meter relay team of Swan, McLennan, Natasha Tate, Amaya O'Neil, and Tashia Walton finished second. And the boys' 4x200-meter relay team of Tyrian Campbell, Diamond Wells, Paul Clark, and Jerome Jones finished third. And for state accomplishments, fourth, Swayne McLennan, he came fourth in the 300-dash and 755-dash. Also, the girls' 4x200-meter relay team won seventh. Let's see, in wrestling, the team placed ninth in the region district. So, let's give Booker T. a round of applause. Next, we have Lay Taylor High School indoor track accomplishments include: Region 3, third long jump, second in triple jump, and fourth in 55-meter. And the district fifth with 55-meter and 13th in the long jump. And in the state, they were, the state, the 22nd in the 55-meter and will be entered into the Adidas National Elite Meet this past weekend. Let's see, in wrestling, Maddox Crowe was second in the 338-class pounds. Amario Redman, third in 126 pounds. And Michael Ricks, third in 195 pounds. Kenneth Buchanan came in third at the 220 pounds. Levante Johnson, fourth in 113 pounds. And Javonte Mann, fourth in 132 pounds. Darius Dudley was fourth in 152 pounds. And Keon Anderson and Chris Hankins came in sixth. The girls' basketball team seeded second in the 3A Region Tournament, finished third. Raquel Jones is Eastern District Player of the Year, First Team All-District, First Team All-Region 3A. Mackaya Williams is First Team All-District, Honorable Mention, All-Region 3A. The boys' basketball team, Elijah Washington, was named the Second Team All-District and Second Team All-Region 3A. And Malachi Washington received Honorable Mention for All-Region 3A. Let's give them a round of applause. Round out the accomplishments with Granby High School. Alexis Vasquez is a regional champ. Leonard Ashley, state runner-up. Michael Cuffey came in sixth in the state. With the boys' indoor track, they're district champs and regional runner-up. Ryan Harris was the district champ in four events, 1,000, 1,600 pole vault and 4x400 relay. Regional champ in three events, state pacer in three events, pole vault, 1,600, and 1,000. And then Kyv Jones, district champ in 55-meter hurdles and 4x4 relay, second at regionals in 55-meters, fifth in the state in 55 hurdles. The girls' indoor, third in, girl indoor track became third in the district. Amelia Loomis, she's the district champ in three events, the 1,600, the 1,000, the 4x4 relay. Regional champ in two events. Destiny Harris, district champ in 55-meter hurdles. With Scholastic Bowl, undefeated district and regional champs, they're fourth in the state. And the boys' and girls' swim teams, district runner-up, 14 boys and girls' swimmers classified for the five, for the Class V State Swim Meet. That is our recognition of our high school sports.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. Um, I do want to take a minute, I know that was, um, it was all very well worth the time that was spent on it and the accomplishments because we have to remember that these are students. These are our students who are also doing really well in athletics and a lot of times, and I know if you were a student athlete, then you might remember the dedication that goes into, um, into learning a new sport. But then when you become at that competitive level, I mean, that is a lot of dedication, a lot of time. But you still have to keep your grades, you know, as, as a top priority as well. So, it's not just being an athlete that we're applauding. I think we need to remember that these are students first and athletes. And, um, and, you know, recognizing that we have more than just football and basketball. We are, we are killing it on the track, you know, on the, on the basketball and football as well. And, um, and in, in cross-country and all of the events, um, in track and field. And I just cannot say enough of how impressed I am that, I will say, Team Norfolk is doing so well and we're showing up not just locally, but at the regional states and, and national level. And we're turning out amazingly talented athletes as well as students. And, and this could really be a ladder for them to their next, to their next step. So, um, so it's just, thank you so much. I'm just so proud to be a part of Norfolk. Next up, another student we like to highlight is Ms. Karma Johnson, our student representative. And she's gonna present her student rep report. Would you like to take the lectern or would you like to speak?
Okay. Okay, sorry. Good evening, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Clanton, Dr. Birdsong, members of the board, and engaged members of the NPS community. I hope you're all doing well. Recently, I've been working on, working with Dr. Dennis Moore on rolling out a mental health app for students and even teachers to use to help them manage their mental health and emotional health through their day-to-day throughout our facilities. We hope to roll this out in May of this school year along with many other resources during Mental Health Awareness Month. Students and parents are glad to see that the Touchless Water Fountains are making their way through our schools for health-conscious access to water for all students and faculty. Many of our Norfolk Public School students who are duly enrolled in the Governor's School for the Arts have received many merit scholarships from top universities, including School of Art Institute of Chicago, Virginia Commonwealth University, and Savannah College of Art and Design. And I'm happy to report, many of our seniors are also looking forward to prom season that is quickly approaching and hope that COVID does not derail the plans of many of our, many of our seniors as they plan for many end-of-year festivities, including Decision Day, prom, senior picnics, and graduation. Are there any questions?
Have you picked out your dress yet?
Oh, it's getting customized by one of my Governor's School for the Arts friends.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Um, up next, we have citizens' comments. Ms. Tanner, please read the script.
I'm sorry about that. We have an abundance of speakers. We have individuals here in the room and then we have individuals in the hallway.
Do you, do you have a number? Have you, do you have a list?
Yes, I'm gonna give you that.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just prefacing what I, what I was gonna say. We have 21 speakers. Today's speakers have signed up for public comment before the start of today's business meeting. When your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's podium. State your name and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools or if you were employed by the district. One person to speak at a time. If you are representing a group, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position and give facts and other relevant data. Avoid saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees. Personnel disciplinary and confidential matters may be addressed to the school board directly via email at schoolboard@nps.k12.vad.us. Comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. School board members do not respond to public comments at the time they are given. Any written statements or supporting materials should be given to the clerk. So, Madam Chair, with that said, our first speaker for today's agenda items and non-agenda items is Stephen Lehman with the Norfolk Environmental Commission. He's the chairman. The topic is balloon use and releasing schools. And followed by Alton Robinson, um, a community activist. So, Mr. Lehman, he's in the hallway, if he can come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
May I remove the mask?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm Stephen Lehman. I live in Norfolk in the Willoughby Spit area. I have no children, although I've been in and out of the public schools for quite some time in association with my volunteer activity at the Norfolk Environmental Commission. I'm here representing that group of 22. I chair that organization. And I wanted to thank the school system for all the support they've helped, helped us as we try to lead citizens towards environmental stewardship. Programs involved that I'll speak about today have been covered in letters to the board and I appreciate, uh, your review of those letters. The first area I wanted to mention is the Green Reader Program where our volunteers go into schools, generally elementary schools, and read to students usually in the fall or the early spring of each year. Obviously, COVID has upset that and I'm asking to be sure that we get the chance to do that again. We read to one-third of all the kindergarten children and third graders every year for three years, therefore cycling through the group. For example, last full year of the program, we read to over 3,000 students and we delivered books to those students so they could take them home. So, it's, many cases, it's the first real book they've had. So, we get all kinds of benefits from that, as you might imagine. Second program in the schools is one of the collection and recycling of plastic bags. You've heard some about this in the news, especially from Virginia Beach. This program, last full year again, before COVID, collected over 600,000 plastic bags brought from home in the school, put into boxes that were developed by the Trex companies that used those bags to make decking for, uh, sale through regular retailers. So, we'd like to continue that program again, if that's possible. And third, the topic of, of the evening is the balloon program. You may know that the state of Virginia has, in fact, says it's illegal to release a balloon into the open air. And the reason that I care about that, it's environmentally important that those balloons not only go up, but they come down. And in all the water, marine areas that we have here, uh, the turtles see those balloons as jellyfish and when they eat them, they suddenly die. So, we're trying to prevent that. I ask the school system to understand its, um, area of responsibility when it comes to recommending festivities. Please, 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 let's encourage no schools to use balloons that are released in the air. And timing is perfect, I suppose.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much for your time.
Alton Robinson?
My name is Alton Robinson. I live in Norfolk. I have one child in Norfolk Public Schools. I'm here because of the closing of Lindenwood Elementary School. I was at the meeting where approximately more than 50 people showed up. They were gonna attend and some were turned away. They were downstairs, they were turned away. A gentleman and his whole family, children who attended Lindenwood School, they were turned away. So, I feel like, what can I say to you? And what is my purpose of saying what I say to you? Are you listening? Or am I just talking to you? Can I say something that can change you however your mind say? You're gonna move in closing the school or not closing the school? What can I say to you? I know you can't answer. I'm putting it in your mind, what can I say to the school board that you do not already know what you're gonna do? Doesn't make sense. Our children, black children, impacted, not white children. 1986, black children impacted. Going back to neighborhood schools, you end up busing. And now, the children who are in Lindenwood, how do you get them to Taylor without a bus? Last, how do you get the children from Lindenwood Elementary School to Taylor Elementary School without using a bus? I know you can't answer. Can't answer. I'm gonna use my time here to just stand here and look. Yeah. Because you cannot answer. Not because you was ordered to not answer because I'm speaking, it's because you can't answer that. You know you wrong. You're doing the children wrong, you're doing the parents wrong, you're doing the community wrong. And they are the ones who elected you to do them right. So, why are you doing the wrong? I know I got about 30 more seconds. Yeah, I know. Why are you doing what you doing to black children, not white children? White children are impacted one bit, not their white children are gonna be impacted over the move of the community. You move, uh, Tower of the Guardians, black children impacted. Now you wanna close in Lindenwood Elementary School, black children are impacted. Where are the white children? What are they? What are they impacted by? What are the white children impacted by? It's always black children in our community.
Thank you.
Natalie Ferrera. She's a teacher at Norview High School, and she's here to talk about teacher pay and budget.
What was her last name?
Ferrera.
Ferrera, thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Martin, school board members. My name is Natalie Ferrara, and I have had the privilege of being an educator for Norfolk for the past eight years. Currently, I am a teacher at Norview High School. In addition to my responsibilities as a teacher, I am also the senior class sponsor, Model UN sponsor, a content team leader, and a new teacher mentor. I list all these simply to convey that I am very proud to work for Norfolk. When I studied to become an educator, I accepted that my work would not be profitable, that the money was never going to be the purpose behind my work. Rather, my purpose was to impact the lives of many in the ways my own teachers had impacted mine. I have never been an advocate for high teacher pay because I'm a civil servant. I understand ultimately that my pay comes from the taxpayer and government. It is not a profitable profession. I will not get rich off of my work. In fact, for as long as I have worked for Norfolk, I have also worked a second job just to make ends meet. Of this, I've accepted both then and for now, it is what is necessary to continue doing the work that defines me, teaching. However, the recent budget proposal on behalf of the district was the latest example of the complete disregard this school board has for the foundation of its work, its teachers. In 2021, the average price for a gallon of gas was $2.94. Today, it is $4.41. My rent in the city of Norfolk during 2021 was $920. Effective May 1st, it'll be $1,400. The school board is proposing up to, and I stress "up to" because, well, who knows, a 5.8% raise in pay for most teachers. What will this mean for me? I will only find out when I receive my contract in the first week of June. This is while our neighboring city of Chesapeake promised 10% raises to its teachers. This means that instead of making roughly $57,000 next year at Step 7 in Norfolk, assuming I receive a full 5.8% raise, I could be making right under $62,000 in Chesapeake immediately. That is a minimum difference of $5,000. What is $5,000 to you all? Is it much? Because for me, the professional with a master's degree that has to work two jobs, it's everything. Recently, a colleague and I discovered that the published pay scales for Norfolk do not necessarily match that of issued and signed contracts for teachers. While Norfolk pushes that they have addressed the loss of steps for veteran teachers that occurred during the 2008 recession, no such repairs have occurred. For instance, my colleague has worked for Norfolk for 14 full years, yet his pay still correlates to Step 7. For someone such as this, the difference in pay between districts is tens of thousands of dollars. In my case, I have taught for eight years but am being paid as if I have only taught for six. A transfer to Chesapeake or Virginia Beach would immediately result in more pay for me. I have often been asked over the years why I have not yet left Norfolk and moved to Chesapeake or Virginia Beach to teach, partly because this is the normal trajectory for Norfolk teachers, and partly due to the ignorance of those who do not understand the magnitude of the work we do in each and every one of our Norfolk schools. But frankly, it is coming to the point where I can no longer rationalize continuing my work for this district. I can't pay my bills with what you all pay me. With everything increasing in price, when will the school board wake up and realize that if they are ever to retain the talent they are so proud of, they must pay equal to the neighboring districts?
Thank you.
Next, we have Cora Johnson.
What's the name again, please?
Cora Johnson.
Cora Johnson?
Cora Johnson?
Come on up.
Yes, Cora Johnson. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Birdsong and school board members. My name, as you all know, is Cora Johnson. I have two children in Norfolk Public Schools. Victor Paxer, doctor graduating Norview High School this year, by the way of going to the Marines on July 25th, serving our country. And Wilford Lee Bellamy Jr. will be graduating Tanner's Creek this summer. I won't be before you long. I have two points of concern. One of those points is, let's build back bus driving by compensating drivers for doing extra runs. Example, I do my bus run 258. If I have to do 129 or 259 or 249 run, I should be compensated for doing that extra run. Just like the schoolteachers in Norfolk, the elementary teachers, they are eating lunch with their kids, getting paid $30 for that day, which is a dollar a minute, a total of $600 for the month. I just want to get compensated for what I do outside of my assigned run. Also, pay the drivers the worth of the Class B CDL, $25 an hour, with insured stopper shortages and the drivers, excuse me, stopper shortages of drivers. I was told in in-service about a month ago, when I asked about the money for the 150 drivers who are not on payroll, I was told that the money was in the reserve. I'm thinking we can use those monies to give the $25 an hour across the board, because cost of living, like the last speaker said, is going up. Cost of gas is going up. What I make, $16 an hour, or I think it's less than that, I got to work a second job too. When I called up here today to register for, to come and speak, I told the lady, I say, "Hold on, because I'm going to step out the cafeteria," because the kids were kind of loud. I said, "I'm a monitor at the cafeteria and I work." When I get up at 4:45 in the morning, my first run starts at 6:20 at the military base. It ends at about 9:45. Then I go down to Willard, and I work from 11 until 1:30. Then I go back to Murray High School and do all four of my runs and my 5:30. So, I haven't been home yet since I left today, because I wanted to be here to talk about what's important to me. I'm just trying to get back on my phone, and I cannot. And the last thing is, John Robert Lewis, do it for good trouble and being effective. As I look across at the board and trustees, I know you all are about good trouble and effectiveness. Let's build back bus driving by paying us the $25 an hour across the board, because we work from sunup to sundown, picking up these babies, dropping them off. Like, right now, my coworkers are not here, because they had middle school games, waiting on those babies to get off them soccer fields and baseball fields, and dropping them to neighborhood housing. That's why that they're not here. But I told them I will come and stand, not only for myself, but for everyone, because bus driver lives matter. Thank you all for listening.
Next, we have Toni Johnson with the NFT. She's a teacher at Granby, and she has concerns with NPS.
Tommy Johnson?
Toni Johnson.
Toni Johnson, sorry. It's hard to hear. Is there Toni?
She's coming, she's out there.
Oh, she, okay. Granby High School teacher?
Yes, Granby High School, NFT, and a teacher at Granby High School. Ms. Toni Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Toni Johnson. I've had four children that attended Norfolk Public Schools. They all graduated a long time ago. And I'm here to represent all of the teachers of Norfolk Public Schools. Dr. Birdsong, Chairman Dr. Adele Martin, and Norfolk Public School Board members. Again, my name is Toni Johnson, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Granby Elementary School, led by Ms. Verhappen. I also serve on the Board of the Norfolk Federal of Teachers. Now, first, I'd like to thank you for the privilege and the honor of being able to use my talent in your school. I've been a part of this district for 16 years, and I don't want to fail to appreciate being a part of this establishment. I've come to let you know how I feel about teachers not being on their proper steps. I would like for the funds to be allocated to teachers first, and I'm going to tell you why. Every time we teach a child to read, we're taking that child off the streets. Every time we teach students character, they learn how to cooperate with others. They learn how to tolerate different viewpoints and to respect the needs of others. Who else has that platform every single day? Except for their parents. But teachers. We can spend money on curriculums. Nevertheless, the curriculum alone cannot teach the students. But it's important. We can spend money on curric-, we can spend money on furniture. We can spend money on computers. Not saying that it's not important. We can spend money on maintaining the school building. Not saying that that's not important. You can spend money on supplies and roofs and the like. Those things cannot teach our children. It goes without saying that the value of any great and flourishing school system are the teachers.
Ms. Johnson, your time is up, but thank you, we hear you.
In closing, if you want teachers to remain, you must maintain.
Excuse me, Ms. Johnson, I can't allow everyone to go over their time. We heard your message. Ms. Tanner, go ahead, who's her next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker. Our next speaker is Sarah Yashalala. And I believe she's in the hallway.
Can you repeat that?
Sha-ra-yashala.
Sha-ala?
Mm-hmm. And then after her is Rakita Robinson.
Thank you.
And she's in the room. You may begin, ma'am.
Good evening, Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Martin, school board members. My name is Sarah Yashala. I have four children in Norfolk Public Schools, one in Norview High School, Rosemont, and Crossroads. There's one more somewhere else. Uh, two in Norview. So, thank you first for the opportunity to come before you tonight. I'd like to share some comments. I'll read them quickly so I don't run out of time. In 2008, I left Hampton City Schools to serve the same community that raised me and the school system that gave me a strong educational foundation. I began teaching in Norfolk on Step 1. After my first year of teaching, I remained on Step 1. I eventually moved to Step 2, then Step 3. After teaching for five years in Norfolk Public Schools, I finally moved up to Step 4, where I remained for another five years. Again, I remained on Step 4 for five years. As a 15-year veteran teacher, I am now on Step 9. Based on the current teacher salary scale, I'm earning nearly $7,000 less than I would on a correct step. Admittedly, although I'm math teacher, I haven't done the math, but I guess that I've merely lost a year's pay in the last 15 years of teaching on the incorrect step. An excellent teacher and dear friend of mine shares a similar experience, except although we began teaching in Norfolk during the same school year, she was still a step behind me. When we realized the new teachers were just steps away from our step, it was very discouraging. This awesome teacher decided to leave Norfolk Public Schools last year after seeing the wrong step on her contract yet another year in a row. Her position remains vacant. I fear that more good teachers will leave our district. We are currently facing a serious teacher shortage, as is most of the US. The burden will not be light for those that continue teaching here. Teachers are enduring unprecedented challenges in the classroom well after our return to learning. Teacher burnout from stress and secondary trauma will not be diminished by a raise or step increase. But providing teachers a fair salary gives teachers a sense of value, appreciation, and respect. The proposed budget offers several incentives and bonuses for new teachers. However, what is the plan to retain teachers? What is the plan to ensure equity when teachers with the same educational background and years of experience make different salaries? We all know that teachers do not become teachers for the money. The average public school teacher salary in Virginia is $60,400, but the range typically falls between $52,700 and $69,750. As a 15-year veteran teacher, my salary is just a few dollars more than the lower end and just under $4,000 more than a new first-year Norfolk Public School teacher based on the starting pay for new teachers in the proposed budget. Teachers that teach in Norfolk love teaching, and they love Norfolk Public Schools. We understand the need to attract new teachers to the district. We welcome them with open arms. We need all the help we can get.
Thank you.
Rakita Robinson, from Richard Bowling Elementary, and with the NFT.
Is this Ms. Robinson?
Yes, Rakita Robinson, yes.
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead and start when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Birdsong, and guests. My name is Rakita Robinson, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Richard Bowling and a member of NFT. I'm here today to speak in support of the best compensation for NPS employees. This is the right time to step it up now. We, your loyal and faithful employees, implore you to do the right thing with the finances that you've been entrusted. In a year in which faithful employees have been working and receiving inadequate compensation for being the NPS frontline workers to accommodate for the district's staffing shortages, we here, you've been presented with a subpar monetary solution. I fear this to be true when $113 million of American Rescue Plan money is unused, money that is for the purpose of delivering relief to the American people and the economy, but it is not slated to serve this rightful purpose with your frontline employees. But if used in the best way, would include putting employees on their correct steps and bonuses for those who have been so loyal in this year when the district has experienced the loss of so many teachers and employees. This lives out the true purpose of the American Rescue Plan. We were faithful, we endured, we delivered, and it is time to step it up now. In the budget proposal, you're starting a four-year study of a study that began six years ago under Dr. Melinda Boone, when she served as superintendent. Under Dr. Boone, some NPS employees were put on their proper step in Phase 1 of her plan. What happened to this study? Are we really going to go back to 2016 all over again? I fear that we're going backwards and cannot claim to be ahead of the curve. In my short time here at NPS, I've seen money that had to go back due to it not being spent in a timely manner. Board members, you have the opportunity to not look back and the ability to undo past wrongs, and this time, you can't say, "Not on my watch." A budget which includes a 6% premium increase for employees' insurance and gives employees an average of 5.8% raise does not recruit new employees or keep and retain current employees. This is upsetting to many who, on meager teacher salaries, are right now finding clever ways to afford the things needed to support the education of our students. I fear, in the future, the gas prices increasing, that there may even come a time when a teacher may have to make the decision to stay home some days because she cannot afford to put gas in her vehicle and take care of her family. This is your opportunity to pay it forward so that this does not happen to your tried and true. We want to come to work. You've seen evidence of this this school year. Honor us with your actions. Show the Norfolk community that you can be good stewards of their money. Give your employees what is passed due to them. Present to those looking for jobs that NPS values all of its employees with the best competitive salaries in the area. Step it up now.
Thank you.
Next, we have Philip Hawkins.
Mr. Hawkins? Good evening. Go ahead and get started when you're ready.
Good evening. Good evening. School board chair, Dr. Martin, vice chair, Mr. Clanton, members of the Norfolk School Board, our superintendent, Dr. Birdsong, and guests. My name is Philip Hawkins Jr., and I am a resident of the city of Norfolk and an employee with Norfolk Public Schools. I am an assistant principal at the PB Young Senior Elementary School. Tonight, I am speaking as an individual citizen, stakeholder, and representative of the Ingleside Civic League and Strategic Planning Committee. For the last three years, the Ingleside Civic League- For the last three years, the Ingleside Civic League has been diligently working and collaborating with our neighbors, businesses, schools, and partners in the city by creating a strategic planning committee to organize and form a strategic plan for our neighborhood. That sounds familiar to our district. And even though, even throughout the pandemic, our Civic League has been very successful in still reaching out to our neighbors and stakeholders to receive valuable input and identify the top priorities for our community. We have kept our community involved, engaged, and informed by helping our elected officials and government leaders to make the right decisions that are in our best interests for a brighter future. During the middle of the pandemic, our Strategic Planning Committee conducted a community survey, which we had strong participation that resulted in our stakeholders by majority identifying that our schools that are connected to Ingleside, and not only, I want to say, not just Ingleside, when we look at our district across the board, they need attention and they need our top priority. So our community has identified that our families and children need safe access. That's one thing that has been identified through the pandemic and ongoing is that the traffic patterns in our communities are very dangerous. I work at PB Young and we had a student that was hit by a car in the parking lot earlier this year and recovering. So, um, that is something that we need to take attention to. At Ingleside Elementary, the interactions of the traffic at arrival and dismissal time is very concerning. So we are proposing that a service road, a study will come out by the city of Norfolk to build a service road that will come in off of Trent Avenue that will connect to the, to the drop-off and pickup loop that will help exit the school on Ingleside Road and back to Virginia Beach Boulevard without backing up traffic and having students at risk, families at risk crossing the street, and people dropping their family, their students off in the street. Um, so we definitely want that recommendation to be considered. Also with the budget, we know that the school feeder program was not to our satisfaction. We wanted Lake Taylor School to be an option, and I know that has been discussed. We still want our schools to remain and be supported to be diverse. So we want Lake Taylor School to still be an option as well as Norview Middle School. We do not want to see the same things happen as we redesign our neighborhoods with this long-term plan. So we will be sending the other recommendations via email to every school board member and city council member, and we will be speaking with them next week as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
We hope you make a good decision. Thank you.
Next, we have Kelly Miller. She's staff and a parent.
Good evening. Good evening. Um, my name is Kelly Miller. I am a teacher at Granby Elementary, and I'm also a parent. I've had three children graduate from Norview, and I currently have a son who is at Norview High School now. My son has lost two teachers this year as a result of pay. Virginia Beach, we sat and watched them give their, their district's employees bonuses. We've seen other school districts that have larger pay increases planned for their teachers. We see the, the number of vacancies as a result of the disparity in pay between Norfolk and other school districts just increases each year. I know that in our, our building, we have multiple long-term subs for positions that can't be filled. That impacts all of us, including our children. As I sit here and look at, at the pay, there's not, there wasn't the teacher pay scale put in the budget proposal this year as there wa- as we saw last year. There wasn't, um, you put all these bonuses in there that, for new people that are coming in, but you don't say what those bonuses are gonna be. There's no encouragement for us to stay when we can go to these other school districts and make more money to be put on proper step, uh, put on the proper step in accordance with our experience. This is gonna result in more open positions. It's gonna result in larger classes and more disruption to the students' education. We need you to look at, at what we're asking and make those right decisions.
Thank you.
Next, we have Melissa Garman, followed by Michael Mohammed.
What was the last name?
Melissa Garman, G-A-R-M-A-N, and she's staff.
Good evening. Don't start my time. I gotta find my notes. All right. Now I gotta get my glasses on. Hi, I'm Melissa Garman. I'm a 24-year veteran of the Navy, and I'm in my third year of teaching at Norfolk Public Schools. My son attended elementary schools here, but he graduated from DOD schools overseas. The National Center for Analysis of Longitudinal Data in Education Research reported that about 500,000 teachers in the U.S. leave their schools, a process that happens year over year. They also reported that about 30% of college graduates that become teachers leave the profession within five years. Frequent voluntary turnover rates affect morale, productivity, and the cost of advertising jobs, recruiting, and onboarding new teachers. Our Superintendent's 2023 Budget Proposal mentions that current data identifies 5,000 teacher vacancies statewide. I've reviewed the budget proposal, and while it offers several initiatives to incentivize new hires and returning hires as well as referrals, it does nothing to propose incentivizing teachers to stay. Recruiting new teachers should not be the school board's top priority. Retaining teachers, retaining employees, that should be your priority. In fact, retaining employees is largely recognized as one of the most cost-effective measures any organization may undertake. Many of my colleagues are here to talk to you about pay, bonuses, and step corrections. I ask you to hear them, hear their concerns, hear their arguments, and keep in mind the value and cost effectiveness of keeping teachers in the classroom and decide to prioritize that and issues that drive teacher retention, pay and job satisfaction. Because as hard-pressed as Norfolk may be to fill its vacancies, it's, so are every other district in this state. And keeping teachers is gonna be even more challenging than ever, especially if more than $100 million is available and this school board does not invest that money in its current teachers. Teachers who have shown up year after year and done the job. I'm three years in, but I know what a long-term commitment means because I've served this country for 24 years. Never did I have to deal with the pay freezes that these teachers have dealt with. So if you can fix the steps, fix them. If you can give larger pay raises, give them. And if you can issue bonuses, issue them. And dag-nabbit, if you can do all three, why the heck not?
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Mohammed, followed by Trina Washington.
Mr. Mohammed, Mr. Mohammed, please begin.
Dr. Martin, Dr. Adele Martin, Mr. Klepto Clanton, Dr. Birdsong, count, uh, members of the board. You all gotta do better. The problem is never in the body, doctor. It's always in the head. And as we sit here on the 12th floor arrogantly in one of the tallest buildings downtown, you all look down on your very employees and support staff. You talk to them in a way that is indicative of disrespect and lack of concern. Dr. Birdsong, you matriculated through this process. You've been where they are. You're making the decision now in conjunction with this board, and it becomes binding on you all to treat people like people. These people have the most precious assets that any of us have for just as much time as anybody other than the parent. And you would entrust your children and our children to people that you don't treat right? It doesn't make sense. The educational decline of America is predicated on you all not doing the right thing when you have the opportunity. Some of you have been in positions where you know you weren't paid or compensated properly. But yet, you sit in positions of decision and you still continue to carry out that which you would not want done to yourself. You were talking about moving these children out of Lindenwood. The shame is that you don't even know the communities that you are mixing and matching children in. I told the, um, viperous, murder-driven mayor of Norfolk and the, the viperous council of Norfolk and your employee, Mr. Tommy Smigel, how do you deal with that? You, they don't understand the damage that they are doing. You all don't understand the damage that you're doing, but you also don't care. And unfortunately, these are human beings. These are lives. These are mothers. You heard a grown woman with children who have already graduated stand here and cry. And you, Dr. Adele Martin, with your arrogant ass.
Excuse me, sir. Don't, you, you need to get out of here right now.
Get out. You get out.
Now, you, you did not come into my board meeting and call us names. You are excused now.
You are a disrespectful example of a chairman. You are disrespectful, and you have lost the confidence of the people.
Please escort him out.
Don't touch me.
This is a civil meeting, and it will remain so.
You yelled at that woman a few minutes ago, you evil arrogant bastard. Because I will drag your ass out.
Good night, Mr. Mohammed.
Next, we have Trina Washington.
Ms. Washington, welcome.
Good evening. Please begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Birdsong and school board members. My name is Trina Washington, and I have been employed with Norfolk Public Schools.
Just one moment. He's having a problem with the clock. Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead. Go reset it.
Reset it.
Good evening, Dr. Birdsong and school board members. My name is Trina Washington, and I have been employed with Norfolk Public Schools for 17 years. I come tonight to talk about the shortage of the custodial department. My school is not the only school that is short-staffed. There are others that are experiencing the same situation. At my school, I had a 10-month employee resign in January of last year and has not had a replacement yet. We also lost a 12-month Mr. Gibbs, God rest his soul, and it was very devastating to us. We also lost a 12-month due to heavy workload. Tomorrow, we will lose another 12-month because of the workload is too much. I have been personally taking more responsibilities, working longer hours along with other building supervisors in the district to make sure our buildings is nice and clean. At times, our area managers tend to undermine the authority of building supervisors, which causes conflict among the custodial staff. Additionally, there are times when new hires have been placed in a certain building even though there is a high need. Another concern is that buildings are being inspected with little to no staff while the expectation still remains the same. So therefore, I am asking you all to look into hiring more custodians across the district, placing them in buildings where they are most needed. I would like to thank my principal, Ms. Matley, and Mr. Sneed, my Assistant Principal, for always being supportive and encouraging us while dealing with these obstacles because custodial services does not. Thank you.
Next, we have Karen Cornelius, Norview High School, and she's with the NFT.
Ms. Cornelius?
Karen Cornelius.
She not here?
Yeah, but she's not speaking.
Okay.
Not speaking? Okay, I'll take her off. Patricia Rubin with the NFT.
Ms. Rubin?
Yeah, I'm coming.
Okay.
You can be, begin when you're ready.
Good evening, school board, Dr. Birdsong, and other guests. I'm with the Norfolk Federation of Teachers. I'm Patricia Rubin. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Little Creek Elementary School. We came this evening to say that we need adequate step increases. Hopefully, you will put your money where our mouth is. We speak as one voice saying restore proper step increases. I have been a loyal employee of Norfolk Public Schools for over 21 years, and I'm on Step 16. Retention does not appear to be a high priority as evidenced by the number of teachers leaving the district and/or the profession and those talking about it. It is insulting that teachers who go to another district and return to NPS return on their right steps, as they should. Are those of us who stay any less valuable? A bonus would certainly be nice, but would impact most of us in our economic lives for about two weeks. We need to be placed on our correct steps based on years of service, which would have a positive impact for much longer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Courtney Skinner with NFT.
Good evening. Good evening. Uh, my name's Courtney Skinner, field representative with Norfolk Federation of Teachers. Good evening. Tonight, I stand before you to speak on a new advisory committee by the name of the Teachers Forum created in October of 2021. This teacher forum was an opportunity to gain insight and feedback from teachers across NPS division. I must say, this was a tremendous idea to potentially improve or modify things as they come up, but also receiving direct feedback from teachers themselves from their representative of that school. According to that memo that was sent out, it states "The teacher representative is to be voted on by the faculty to represent them in the teachers' forum meeting." So why am I here? Well, it has been brought to the forefront that although this was a great idea to implement, principals have taken matters into their own hands to pick the teacher representative for their school. Out of all the schools we've visited and the several members we've spoken with, we only know of three schools that follow the proper procedures. We commend those principals at those schools. However, teachers outside of those schools never voted for a teacher's representative, which means those schools have not been represented all year. In fact, many of the teachers within NPS aren't aware of the teachers' forum. As of last week, some principals have been scrambling and flurrying emails to get a teacher representative on this teacher forum that again was supposed to be submitted on the first day of November in 2021, where in March. Another concern I would like to bring to your attention is about the agenda. According to the memo, it states, "Members of the teachers' forum will be asked to provide agenda topics of interest to them and the faculty they represent," and also how they will be responsible for sharing those discussion topics with faculty. Yet, I have the agenda with me that was not curated by the representatives on the teachers' forum here. Some of the representatives of the teachers' forum have stated that their agenda items are being disregarded. Again, this idea of creating a new advisory committee is a refreshing resource tool to gain awareness and feedback from the teachers across the division. However, we suggest that the outline in the memo should be followed to ensure that the teachers' forum works accurately. If this teacher forum does continue next school year, it is imperative that all educator voices are not only heard, but also taken into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Thomas Calhoun with NFT.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Thomas Calhoun, president of Norfolk Federation of Teachers. As you've been hearing, we cannot wait for another four-year study that was done six years ago and was starting to get implemented when you're sitting on $113 million in the rescue, 20 extra million that you're gonna give away in bonuses. That's a hundred and thirty-three million dollars. Why we gotta wait another four years for you to study it again? It'll be ridiculous. Madam Chair, I hear y'all prepared to vote on the budget tonight, superintendent's budget. Did you forget to send out a public notice? I haven't seen one. You don't feel like you need to hear from the students, parents?
Sir Calhoun, we do not address individual members of the board. We address the board in full, so I advise you to continue to do so.
I don't know if that ruled. Is that a new rule?
No, it's been, it has actually been in our policy for years.
So I can't say, Madam Chair, I can't say superintendent?
Do not direct any questions at an individual board member.
Okay, this board, oh, can I get that time back, please? Just a few seconds, did you took away? This board, did you all forget to send out a notice? A public hearing that you're going to vote on the budget tonight? Did y'all forget the parents, teachers, students, community? And their schools, their schools, and their children? Did y'all forget? Or, or, or did you decide, Board, that this is a practice that we've been doing for forty years and not a policy? So therefore, you don't have to do it. Is that what happened? I'm trying to figure out why we haven't sent out a public notice that you're going to vote on the superintendent's budget. I'm just asking. Board? That's all I'm doing? You're not going to do one? I'm, I'm, you're not going to have? You're not going to tell the public that you voted not? I was talking to a city council member this week and I said, you know, I'm really trying to get ready for the school board. They're going to vote on the budget and there's no public hearing. And the school board, she said, "No public hearing?" Y'all don't care what we think, do you? You don't want to hear what someone has to say. There's only one reason, board, and that's because you don't care what they think. That's why you don't care if you listen to them or not. But one thing about it, y'all gonna listen? I hear a bunch of y'all up for reelection in November, huh? Okay. We don't vote on the superintendent, the next board will vote on the superintendent. But we voting on y'all and some of y'all ain't going to be here till November. You disrespect us, board. You disrespect all of us. Thank you, board.
Next, we have Beverly Gwynn. Beverly Gwynn.
Beverly Gwynn?
Beverly Gwynn!
Hi.
Good evening. Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. My name is Beverly Gwynn. I'm a school bus driver for Norfolk Public Schools. Regarding the thousand-dollar bonus, oh, I'm sorry, it's the incentive pay for the bus drivers for extra cleaning and sanitizing the buses, I'm asking you to consider including the bus attendants also. I'm a sped bus driver, special education bus driver. And the attendants, all right, as far as our buses, we clean, we have extra items to clean, seat belts, car seats, safety straps, bodily fluids and such. Our attendants share that responsibility in cleaning and sanitizing the buses. So I'm asking you to consider them in that thousand-dollar incentive. So that is one topic. The next topic is regarding the starting wage for bus drivers. This is definitely a good start in trying to solve our ongoing year-to-year bus driver shortage problem. Will it be enough? Time will tell. I know Chesterfield County, they found their sweet spot to correct the problem. It was much higher. So is this the sweet spot? We don't know, you know, we'll be able to tell. If not, you know, maybe next year, but we've got to do something. We've got our, we've got our mechanics out there driving buses instead of working on making sure that we have safe buses to run. So we may have found our sweet spot, but we may not have. But also, I do have a concern about the existing drivers. We're doing the right thing on increasing that pay for the starting drivers. I mean, we're at the bottom of the list as far as pay, but increasing it up to eighteen is awesome. It's a great start, might work, but are you taking care of the existing drivers? We can't afford to lose any more drivers. We can't afford to lose any. You've got us as a seven-and-a-half percent for classified employees that I don't think touches making sure that you're taking care of the existing drivers. You know, if we're not getting, right now, based on what I'm seeing, I'm a five-year driver, I'm making less than what a new one could come in. I don't know what your steps and your levels are. I trust that you are taking care of the existing drivers as well. At least that, that is my hope. And lastly, thank you, Dr. Birdsong and the school board for the twenty-five-hundred-dollar bonus that has been approved. I don't know if I worded that right, but thank you. It's not a lot for some people, but for a driver-
Thank you. Thank you.
It is. So thank you.
Next, we have Jessica Smart, followed by Jeff Bernstein with EAN.
Good evening.
Good evening, respected board members. I am Jessica Smart, a special education teacher at Azelia Gardens Middle School. Although we really appreciate the bonus, we would like to be on our right steps. As teachers, we deal with disrespect daily from students and sometimes parents. We are underappreciated and underfunded. If you want to keep teachers that are both passionate and care about the children and their futures, we need to act now. Please show us that we are respected and put us on the right step. You have been granted the opportunity to fix these wrongs without Peter having to rob Paul. Will you take it? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is it Jeff Bernstein or Brent Bernstein?
Bernson.
Bernson.
You said it perfect, I believe, the first time.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Martin, Vice Chair Clanton, school board members, Dr. Birdsong and administration. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm going to echo, and I can't really add much more than some of the folks added other than I'm looking at this issue of the pay increase. I'm the unit serve director, I'm sorry, of EAN Education Association of Norfolk. I'm also the unit serve director of Chesapeake, CEA. Their budget beginning, they started their first budget a couple of months ago and they started out at, I believe, forty-nine or forty-eight-five. And then this past meeting, they just upped it realizing that they needed to get more in sync with other districts and they raised it to fifty-one-five. It looks like it will be approved, or actually, it was approved last week. It will go to city council in Chesapeake. I'm concerned that Norfolk really needs to get on closer to other districts. I know at this point, Virginia Beach, and I believe Chesapeake is over, obviously. The gentleman's agreement that I think the districts have had is all but gone out the window. Teachers are hot commodity. There's nobody, nobody's standing at the door, unfortunately, waiting to get a teacher job. What we have, we need to retain folks and we need to bring new folks in as well at a higher salary that's more competitive with the other districts. I am concerned that Norfolk is going to lose teachers to other districts if it's not already happening. So I look forward, hopefully, to at least matching what the other districts are doing as in starting pay. And again, and people brought up the steps. I know there hasn't been steps in quite a few years. I'm hoping that we're going to add, if we're going to add more to teacher salaries and other salaries as well. We represent classified folks as well, that we bring the steps up also. The last person that spoke about attendance, it's my understanding that the attendants, I hope they're going to be in, in the pay scale raise as well. Some of them are non-contracted for reasons, many of them are retired and they can't make, they can only make so much of this per year, so they stay non-contracted. They didn't receive the bonus back in September, which I thought all employees were going to, but they didn't. Many of the contracted didn't as well, and I really don't know why. So I'm hoping they'll be included in this next contract along with the bus drivers. Thank you all. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Next, we have Taisha McCoy.
Ms. McCoy?
Followed by Vicky Greco.
Okay, Ms., did, did Ms. Greco leave also? Okay, Ms. Greco? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Manuga-Greco. I'm an NPS parent, a Lake Taylor graduate, former NPS special educator and NPS school advisory committee member. I'm a volunteer. I know we all long for the good old pre-pandemic days, but I have been thinking a lot about going back to normal and I think these words from Ed Young, a science journalist, say it all for me. "We long to return to normal, but normal led to this. We must grapple with all the ways normal failed us. We have to build something better." People with disabilities agree wholeheartedly. The accommodations they have asked for years, like remote work and remote learning opportunities, masking requirements to protect weakened immune systems and to prevent serious illness, allocation of resources to address public health needs, including mental and behavioral supports, they're all readily implemented once the overall population needed it to help survive the pandemic and all the challenges it brought and wrought. So solutions were stepped up. People with physical and health differences don't want us to go back to the normalcy of the basic status quo. And public education advocates like me don't want the return to normalcy either. The academic, social, and emotional learning needs of our kids demand us to do better for our kids, our schools and our teachers and staff. I'll note the primary examples of better and appropriate pay compensation benefits for our professional educators and staff, better communication to the community for authentic collaboration and engagement, not just post-decision damage control. And finally, the evidence-based best practices that leads to improved outcomes for our kids, especially our kids who are so very close to graduating, such as implementation of later start times for our high schoolers. They're exhausted. As part of last Wednesday's night's Zoom workshop for students and parents that addressed anxiety and stress in gifted adolescents, high school students asked and commented in the Zoom chat why the later start times that actually ensure our oldest learners are awake and alert to learn haven't been put into practice by NPS. There's a misperception that the pandemic prevented it. However, even before the 2020 lockdown began, the board guided by NPS administration voted to rescind its earlier vote of adopting this best practice of later start times for high schoolers. The board decision to suspend indefinitely later start times was made before the pandemic lockdown on March fourth, the same night of the scheduled second budget public hearing that year that gave stakeholders the official opportunity to give citizen comments before the board voted on the proposed budget. Excuses given were barriers to childcare, transportation, and extracurricular activities. Well, guess what? The pandemic laid bare all these alleged barriers that made that needed to be addressed. These were all needed to be addressed by our board administration anyway. So clearly, let me get back to clearly, back to normal is not good enough. You must strive for better for our teachers, kids, and schools beyond this pandemic, especially in the five-year strategic plan process that's taking place now. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this concludes our speakers for this evening.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Thank you, Dr. Rousen. Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Basine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Yeah, sorry. Okay, I'm just, I'm looking at all these arrows. So up next, we have seven point zero one, our monthly financial report. Mr. Jenkins? Is he going to? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Hello, sir?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Clanton, members of the board. I think that my first topic is the financial report. Okay, so we have it displayed, I think. Okay. The financial report covers eight months for the fiscal year that started July first. During this period, we collected two hundred and ten million dollars of general fund revenue. That was fifty-nine percent of the three hundred and fifty-five million dollar operating budget. During the same period of the previous years, we had collected fifty-eight percent in fiscal twenty-one and fifty-nine percent in fiscal twenty-twenty. On page three, we have highlight, the highlights. We provided a graph of revenue and spending. By the end of February, we had spent or encumbered two hundred million dollars or fifty-six percent of our, of our budget. Again, the revenue was two hundred and ten million through, through February. During the previous two years, spending for the same period was fifty-seven percent for fiscal twenty-one and sixty-one percent in fiscal twenty. So our spending is slightly down from the previous two years. On page four, there are graphs of revenue and expenditures. This is actually trend analysis for the last three years. Additional information is available starting on page five. During the month of February, we recorded two transfers for school facilities that exceeded fifty thousand dollars. The combined total was two hundred thousand, in which we transferred funds from the facility improvements to maintenance services in order to address repairs to heating and ventilation systems. Dr. Martin, that concludes my monthly financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you for the report. Just a few questions, I think. On the financial report, can you just point out to me the, the line that keeps track of the likelihood of unexpendited funds at the conclusion of this fiscal year?
We don't have a line on the, on the reports, but I mean, I can, I can review the expenditures with you if you turn to page five of the report.
Okay.
We have a budget, and I'll just drop to the last line. Our total expenditures, three lines up from the bottom, is three hundred and fifty-four million, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Is there a budget? We have been, we have spent to date a hundred and ninety-nine million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand. So the difference between those two, I'm sorry, I can't do math real good.
About ten million, is that right?
So the surplus that we're projecting is part of that. Now, of course, this goes through the month of February. We still have four months left, March through June, and our spending is running. Let me just look at what we have for the month. If you turn to page number, I'm sorry.
I saw it on page five also.
Page what?
Page five, spending is approximately, approximately eight point four, four hundred and forty, eight point four-five million. Is that what you're?
No, I see the highest.
If you turn to page fourteen of that, of that report, you can see that we spent during the month of February twenty-nine million. So we're spending just under thirty million a year, excuse me, a month. We still have four months to go and expenditures are not even throughout the, from one year, from one month to another. So our projection is for wages and benefits and we've expected there's, we probably have about a twenty million dollar surplus in that. But you can see on page fourteen, we spent thirty million, twenty-nine million, two hundred and fifty thousand in the month of Fe- But you can see on page 14, we spent 29,250,000 in the month of February, which is not an atypical month.
Just for clarity, so I understand that the information that you were sharing with me on page five, that that goes through February?
Correct.
Which is about eight months?
Correct.
And then you are mentioning that, so as of February timeframe, based upon this report, we're at about $10 million where we have more revenue than expenditures at that time. Is that correct?
Well, remember, the eight months includes the month of July and August, and our spending is much lower in those two months.
Right.
So that's part of the reason why you can just multiply 30 million by eight to get the number here. It will be smaller because those two months are much smaller. Also, I'm just looking at the total expended. There's also this thing called encumbrances, which is pulling down from the available funds, but it hasn't actually been paid yet, and those vary from month to month.
Right. I guess I'm trying to?
I'm sorry, but I didn't prepare to speak to exactly what our surplus is throughout the entire budget. But we had projected for wages and benefits, it would be about 20 million.
Yeah, and that's what, I guess I'm trying to, because I asked this at the last month's meeting too, because what I'm trying to do is to be able to monitor that. So in your projection of that we might end the year with a $20 million unexpended fund balance, how do I see on this report, if I can, how you project that 20 million?
Let me suggest, turning to page nine, I think that might be better than the previous page. And this has expenditures by type of expense. So you see salaries and employee benefits, the first two lines. We have at this point $92 million in salaries available and $38 million in benefits. We still have four months of pay and benefits to go. So it's going to be based on the information coming from those two accounts.
So in essence, where we are on the year is about 66% through the year, but at least the salaries and benefits right now on this report are showing that 43%, 44%.
It doesn't quite work quite that easily because the teachers are under 10-month contracts, and they didn't start till September. So we aren't quite at the 66%, especially for most of our staff that are on 10-month salaries.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just.
If I could get some analysis to you, I'll be glad to brief you at next month's meeting.
And the other goes to the, another question to the transfers. So I'm still trying to follow light of the, I just can't seem to follow the money that we have from the federal government and the money that we previously budgeted, and why we are still finding ourselves doing transfers related to HVAC and other things. I'm just not quite following why that's occurring. Can you give me some further insight?
Yes, I'd be happy to. While we have proposed, and actually that's been approved by the Department of Ed, to spend a substantial amount of money replacing heating and cooling systems, it's really indicative, the spending that we have is really indicative of the state of the equipment that we have. So we're having to repair these things even as we're planning to replace them. But the replacement requires engineering designs. It requires that we actually bid, in many cases, do the competitive bidding, and we just haven't been able to get all of the designs so that we could actually start replacing units. On top of that, there's a 17-week order, you get your units 17 weeks after you order them, which is more than a quarter of a year. That's what it was in December. It may be worse now. So we have a really long-term, a fairly long-term plan to replace a lot of HVAC equipment, but we're spending a lot just maintaining it until we can get to the replacement point.
What is it then in contract services that we aren't doing or are deferring? That if I'm understanding this correctly, we're taking $200,000 from contract services and moving $200,000 into building, improvement, and acquisition? So what's the ripple effect? What's the contract services that's being deferred or being impacted?
We, well, I'm looking at this now, and I'm seeing the explanation is a little different. The money that's being moved is coming from the building, improvement, and acquisition account to go into the contract service. So I think the statement might be backwards, and we did not notice that. But if you look at the justification, it says transfer funds for HVAC repairs and services at various locations. So we're pulling money out of what we had hoped to be able to use for building improvements in the operating budget, and we're having to spend it on maintaining the HVAC systems.
Okay. Well, then I'll ask the question in reverse then. So what is it that we thought we were going to be doing in building, improvement, and acquisition that we're removing $200,000 from that line and moving it to contract services? What is it that we're impacting?
I would have to talk with their facilities folks.
Is that something that Dr. Birdsong, that's something anyone may be able to address tonight?
Martin, can we address it tonight? If Mr. Jenkins can't answer it, then we need to research it, and we're happy to answer that for you. But clearly, he's not prepared this evening.
I would have to look into that and get back with you, sir.
Thank you.
I would be happy to.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you. Sorry.
Dr. Martin, I just ask one other. When, I can't remember on the schedule, the grants report, the detailed grants report. When is that?
Next month. It's scheduled for next month.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Poehl.
Good evening, Dr. Martin.
Yeah, we need to vote to accept. Yeah, can I get a motion to accept the financial report as presented?
Move to select the financial report as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Kamson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Ms. Tanner?
Basine?
Aye.
Kamson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Rousen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Dr. Poehl?
All right.
Go ahead when you're ready.
Good evening, Madam Chair Martin, Vice Chair Clanton, School Board members, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here tonight with the recommendation of approving option one for the calendar choice. At the last meeting, you had asked for some information around parent-teacher conference days. I wanted to share a little bit of research that we did around that. 2015-16 was the last academic calendar year that had parent-teacher conference days as a part of the schedule. This was stopped because of low attendance rates of parents coming to the day. The day was usually around Columbus Day or early October. Schools started then having weekly meetings for parent-teacher conferences where a parent could request on a weekly basis. And another part of the reasoning was that the email and online grades just made information more readily available.
Go ahead, Ms. Kamson.
Just a quick question. Was, did you look at the difference in attendance at conferences with the different school levels, like elementary, middle, and then high school? Wasn't there a much larger group of parents who were coming into the elementary?
So we don't have centrally housed attendance rates for the parent-teacher conference days that I could find record of.
Then how do we know that they were not attended well?
That was the reasoning from when they were stopped. But I don't have.
There's no data for it?
I don't have it on hand with me, the data for it.
Because that year was, first year I was not in the schoolhouse, and before that, leading up to it, we were packed. And I don't think that our school any different from the other schools or the parents. So it almost appears like there was a decision made without any data. I mean, I don't want to, but it kind of sounds that way. And I know they're not as well, not well-attended. The higher they get, the less, I mean, the elementary schools, the Ks and the Ones are the ones that get the most parents. But they get them. Many teachers had so many parents coming, she had to continue it into the next week after school. So I'm not going to vote against the budget on that, but I would like it to be something that we look at for an upcoming year after that, if that would be okay.
Dr. Martin?
Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
I just, to Ms. Kamson's point, I do recall the discussion around the attendance at parent-teacher conferences. I don't recall the specific data, but I think there was maybe some surveys done at that time that was included in part of the recommendation to?
Surveys of?
Parents and teachers that resulted in the recommendation to eliminate the parent-teacher conference day on the calendar. Anecdotally, I think you're exactly right. You know, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I think I attended just about every parent-teacher conference with both my children, except I remember one time I was at a school board meeting. And I think you do see that trend where elementary school is, parents are much more likely to attend than as you go through high school. In the recent survey, I don't think we asked a question about parent-teacher conferences. And at the last meeting, when we discussed it, the reason that I brought it up is that feedback I was hearing from some parents was that, especially in light of returning back from the pandemic, that the request was for us to consider having parent-teacher conference days as a result of what these parents that mentioned it to me felt they needed because so much was going on in the virtual environment, even with all the technology. They just felt disconnected from having that communication with the teacher or the principal, whoever it is, that they wanted to set up their appointment, even as they were appreciative of all the technology that was available. And that was my recommendation or rationalization for asking that parent-teacher conference day be considered as part of the calendar.
It could be that the elementary schools would be the only, I'm sorry.
Kamson, can you speak in the microphone?
It could be, thank you. It could be that it is as effective a tool at the middle and high schools, but the lower you are in elementary school, the bigger bang you get for the buck with those conferences. So as I said, I'm fully supporting what's been done here by the committee, but I just want us to look at it for the next year.
Anyone else? Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
So just so that I'm clear, option one calendar is what we're considering, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
I'd like to pose to my colleagues the possibility, when looking at this calendar, we're giving two-week break. We're giving a solid two weeks, and then we come?
During Christmas.
During Christmas break in December. And then we come back on the winter holiday. And then we come back in January, and we're giving that Monday, the 2nd, off. Typically, in the month of March, there's no time off, there's no holidays or anything like that. And so I'd just like to possibly pose the option of moving that holiday off on the 2nd and giving it maybe on March 13th, where the teachers have a workday on the 10th, and then they were able to have that Monday off. I know Mr. Calhoun's back there. I don't know if that's a nod, yes, that that would be something that you think would be amenable?
I'm not on the, you said March the 10th?
March 13th. So in other words, they have like a workday where they have no students on the 10th, but give them the 13th. So rather than giving them January 2nd, so they have two solid weeks, and then that extra day, give them a day in March so they can at least have a day off during that month. Because right now, March, all they have is that one asynchronous, kind of like workday. So I'm just asking if we could move that one day and give them the 13th.
Ms. Basine?
Yeah, I was just going to piggy, just a little tidbit on that piece is that that is daylight savings. So the other benefit to that is we'll be springing forward, and we know what that means for a lot of people in terms of, you know, is that March 13th day? Because if it does pass, you know, it won't go into effect until November 23rd, 2023. So we still have next school year where, you know, we have those adjustments.
So you're proposing that for the following year, not for this coming year?
For next year.
Yeah, because I was going to say, you can't just arbitrarily change something that committees have.
No, we're changing it, we're suggesting it. We're having this discussion about this calendar for 22, 23.
Right.
Right.
So that's this coming school year.
We would be making a decision to change it tonight from the one that they've decided on?
Yeah, we're having that discussion right now.
Okay, thank you.
And that's just on feedback that I've received. If that was an option, that's on this place that I'm here to the board.
Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
I just want, just for clarification again, so on the, if I'm looking at the correct option, I see the March 17th, that's the teacher workday and asynchronous learning that you're referring to?
March 10th. I'm looking at option one.
On option one? Option one is the one that was the preferred by the committee, and?
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. It's all in one. Okay. I got you.
You're going to vote on option one?
I'm off. I'm off. I follow you.
That's okay.
And so like you'd said, Mr. Clanton was saying is, we get two weeks off for winter break, and then a weekend, and then the one day. And so to observe January 1st as a holiday, whereas Mr. Poehl explained at our last meeting that we don't have to recognize that federal holiday. And so what Mr. Clanton was suggesting was, because we already have two, you know, two, three weekends and Sundays off, is that we'd move it to a time, an area on the calendar where we have less days off, and that would be in March. So to make it that Monday, March 13th, which Ms. Basine pointed out would be daylight savings time, and give us an extra day of, I guess, adjustment. Right?
Good summary.
Mr. Jordan, do you have?
I think Ms. Johnson.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
I'm just studying it.
Go ahead. Even though you will be graduated and doing exciting things by this time.
Here now.
I just wanted to say that a lot of the students and teachers really this year, so the 2021, 2022 school year. So I just wanted to say on behalf of them that we're really happy that you guys will be continuing that next year, even though you will be graduating.
You guys do continue to do that in the future. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, the two-week break is very popular.
Yes.
So any other comments on the calendar or comments on making, moving the holiday on the 2nd to March 13th?
I have a question. So why couldn't the March 10th teacher workday be March 13th rather than taking away the January 2nd?
Make the March?
Again, Ms. Basine, please.
So right now, let me be sure I'm looking at the right. Yeah, option one. On March 10th, it says teacher workday asynchronous day, right? Why couldn't we make it the 13th, which would give, you know, some flexibility, but, and keep the January 2nd as is?
So you're saying make another day off?
Teachers would still be working, though, on asynchronous day.
Oh, so are you talking about just a full day off?
So taking that second and giving them a day off on the 13th?
I missed that part. Okay.
Because it's a long stretch with no days off. I was saying, why don't we go ahead and give them a day off? And then you also made the point that it's daylight savings time. So I was thinking it'd be a long weekend.
Yeah. Okay. I understand now.
So you would call that what? What day? Would it just be NPS closed or what?
Sunshine day. Sunshine Day? Um, yeah.
What, what would it be labeled?
I mean, it would, it'd be a day off.
Thank you.
So MPS closed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or you could call it whatever January 2nd was going to be called, but
It could be a holiday. I'm just thinking that, you know, as I was stating, we get solid two weeks there.
MPS closed, oh, I do.
Then you have a holiday, and I think, I think one of the other sister school districts around here kind of like started right on that Monday when we came back as well this year. But I just think it's such a long break with no break time. If it would be rewarded, you know, thank you, we'd get a day off.
And just like what we just did this year was, we realized we needed more breaks and breaking it up.
Yeah.
And so to try to accomplish this, wasn't even thinking about daylight savings, that's just a bonus that Ms. Campson, or I'm sorry, Ms. Bassin added. So what do you, what do you guys think?
If I could speak really quick to some of the comments, having opportunity to read through the comments as well, there were several commenters who said the same, that there are a lot of breaks in November and December, but from January through the end, you have spring break and that's really it.
Yeah.
That would follow some of the comments on the calendar survey as well.
Okay.
I agree. That was a good idea.
So with that, Madam Chair, just so we keep things moving, I'd like to move that we adopt option one calendar with the noted adjustments of moving the January 2nd holiday to
No, it's, oh wait, I'm looking at July, you're right.
Moving the January 2nd holiday and making it now a March 13th holiday observance. Day off, MPA, MPS closed.
Okay. And it was seconded by Dr. Gabriel to March 13th. Okay. Please call the question.
Dr. Martin?
Oh, yes.
Could we have, don't we have a discussion?
I thought we were just having discussions.
Well, I'm not, not, that wasn't before the motion was
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So while I like a lot of things, you know, that we traditionally associate when we're planning the academic calendar, like, you know, the vacation, you know, the, the holiday, the winter breaks, spring break, all of those things. As I said during the work session, you know, I do, I would like to see us align the calendar a little better with what the needs of our students are. And so, you know, when I talked about last time, you know, a potential pre Labor Day start, I've talked about just looking at even trends, you know, with these, you know, with these patterns that we have, you know, like the November, you know, I'm concerned, you know, that we have days where there's a lot of student and potentially teacher absences, you know, like the week of Veterans Day where we have that one, you know, the 8th, and then we have that day. I know people that, you know, might think, well, I might as well take the whole week, you know? So I feel like we need to look at some, some student and teacher, you know, trends and absenteeism as we, to inform, you know, the calendar process. So with that, again, and I, I know I talked about this last year, but really being more, you know, imaginative with, with our calendar. So with that, I am going to be not voting in support of the calendar.
And I had, at our agenda planning meeting, and I expressed this at our last meeting too, I agree with you. I think that we, while we want our teachers, you know, to have input on, on the calendar options, I think that exploring the pre Labor, have at least one option that's, you know, exploring the pre Labor Day start time would be really helpful. We're seeing, you know, Newport News just passed that they're doing it. And so, not that I want to follow Newport News, but I, I just see that it's happening. You know, I know you, you said it's not happening on the South Side yet and I haven't heard that it is, you're right. But I do still think that it's worth doing our due diligence to explore as many options as, as possible. Go ahead.
Just, I appreciate what Mr. Clayton has put forward, but it also has me going back trying to revisit the differences between the options. Dr. Pol, can you just remind me again, like, what are the two or three major differences between the option one and the option two that we have? Because I, I think I see that both of them have the, the two weeks in December, right? So what, what, just remind me again what the major differences are between the original proposed option one and option two?
Absolutely. So there aren't a great deal of differences between option one and two. The biggest difference was the, the change in the end date of school to where students would end on June 15th and have a teacher workday on June 16th, which moved the, what day was it? I'm sorry, Mr. Jordan. It moved the, the, you'll see that the, the workdays, there was a workday in February, worked, or sorry, an asynchronous workday in February and in March and October. And then the end of the school year would stop on the 15th for the students and 16th, the teachers would have a workday there. On option one, there was an October and March and May day, and the last day would be on the, last day of school would also be the last day for students. So those were the, the major differences is really where it ended in the placement of the different asynchronous workdays on the calendar.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
You ready? Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clayton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
I'm, I'm really not sure, but I'll, I'll, I'll vote in support, aye.
Boulson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pol. Up next, we have the adoption of the school board's budget for fiscal year 2023. Can I get a motion to adopt?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the proposed budget.
Use as much space as you can.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Let's open it up for discussion.
Madam Chair, as the maker of the motion, I'd like to speak first. Dr. Bert Song and I guess Mr. Jenkins, I just want to bring some clarity. There's been a lot of discussion about the budget and I want to make sure that we offered, you offered the opportunity to have two by twos. I know that I took that opportunity along with Dr. Gabriel to bring clarity around budget. I know that some other members of the board did so as well. So can we go to the compensation regarding the pain comp study and compression? Particularly because I've heard we're doing a new study, but I'm reading in the actual presentation, it's saying implement phase, implement phase one of a four-year plan to, I think to, for what you told us to address the, the steps. It also says the study results continue to be under administrative review, but you said implement phase one. So if I'm hearing implement, it means to take action. So can you let me know and let the rest of the board know what that action is?
Sure. And I may need to call on a friend, Mr. Phillips. But I will try my best. To summarize, we did share with the board on the second that we wanted to take some action on the compression. I cannot speak to what study was done previously. It's my understanding that that study had been implemented to its fullest, but the problem still exists. And so that's what this administration was trying to deal with, the existing problem that occurred before we, we were actually seated and we know the importance of addressing the, the compression. And the study has not been, we have not received the final report and we shared that with the board on the second. However, we, again, we know the importance of taking some action to demonstrate to our teachers and our staff that we value them, we want to retain them, and so we want to take some action to address the compression. And so in working with the consultants who were hired to do this work, we had a team that worked with the consultants. Again, it's not in the final stage in terms of us getting a report, but there was $2 million that it is my understanding that it's needed to implement the first phase. Again, this was to demonstrate action so we can move forward this year so that next year, the compression issues, we can start to address them. So that was the point of adding it to this budget. We didn't want to wait another full year.
So there's $2 million that's being placed, that's in the budget right now that's being proposed?
It's proposed budget.
That's addressing the, the compression, right?
That is, it's not addressing all of it because it's a four-year process.
But it's starting, it's the first fa, it's the first phase.
That is correct, it's the first phase.
Okay.
What just happened?
And, and that's dealing with the steps compression. The other piece that I just want to make sure that I bring clarity around, because I've heard about $133 million, which I take as the ESAR dollars. In budget accounting, I know Mr. Jenkins in here, you know this better than I, we have a difference between what we will have year over year funds and the difference between one-time funding. And so when we look at the federal funds that we have that are being presented to us, which did have some stipulations regarding Title I and so forth, my understanding also is that those are considered one-time funds. And we wouldn't use those particular funds, or they couldn't be used, to actually increase or make a salary increase because at some point, unless one of our funders, because Norfolk Public Schools isn't, we can't tax, we can't generate, we can only request, which meaning either we're getting funding from the federal, from the state, or from the local capital, our locality, which is the city of Norfolk. So that 133 is, it's not a part of any of those major pockets, it's just one-time funding, right?
I just correct Mr. Clayton?
Okay. So when we, when we hear about 133 million dollars, trust me, if I could give a raise to that level and get everybody where they were, I just want to say that I would and I think that my colleagues would want to do that. However, we can't use those funds and I don't want it to be misconstrued out there that we're not taking action on one-time funds. I'm, I'm hearing that there's $2 million to begin to look at the, the compression. I know that we have a lot of competition, but we also have to look at, when we look at these pie charts, if I'm not mistaken here, talks about where we're getting the locality and where we're getting the money. And we're not getting fully funded at the state level. And then also there's a difference between with the SOQ in regards to, when we look at the governor talking about budgets and talking about pay raises, it pays for some employees and not all employees, which means that the extra responsibility and burden then gets placed on the locality, which is not Norfolk Public Schools coming up with money, it's the city of Norfolk. Am I correct in that statement?
You're, you're correct that the state does not fund all of the positions. We have more teachers, for instance, than are required by standards of quality. That's very correct.
And so my last thing on that one, because I, I, I really, I understand the competition when it comes to our teachers, but also the competition when it comes to our bus drivers. And I, and I heard about the Class B, $25 to be at that level. I think Newport News just did $20, I think, or something like that with their bus drivers. The only thing that I would potentially ask for, when we look at bus drivers and we also, and I think that request was asked about, I think we have some discretionary funds in there when we look at, including those bus attendants in, in that, in that bonus category, that we begin to look at what we can do. I know that you've done a lot of studying, done a lot of work around it, but ways that we can continue to be competitive. I know that the superintendent and team has worked really hard and just like I think somebody else said in here in the respect that, I think it was the EAN representative mentioned that the competition used to be a gentleman's agreement, that each school division did not steal, I'll just put it out there, teachers and, and other staff members. And that's not happening. I mean, I, I
That's not true. We, we still have that agreement in place.
We may still have the agreement, but we know that there are other triggers in regards to if you are putting out a certain salary base that's higher than others, it, you know, it, it is attractive to folks. But I just don't want anyone to think that the ESAR dollars that were there, which have already, you know, we've had a plan on, could be used for bonuses. If we could, I think that, I, I can't speak for all my colleagues, but I know that I would support moving it up, but we can't.
I would, I would simply say it's not a very good practice to use one-time money for recurring costs.
Yeah.
Because at the end of the grant period, we're, we're going to have to replace those funds. So I would agree with what you're saying.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Bassin and then Dr. Gabriel. And then Ms. Campson, sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. So there's a couple of things that I want to address and I do want to get back to what some of the questions that Mr. Clant, Clayton just posed. Well, first, you know, I was expecting that we might have the opportunity to have more discussion. As I said at the last, at the March 2nd meeting, you know, I believe that the budget process should be the board's budget process and not two members of the board meeting with the superintendent and going through that process. Because I don't have the benefit of understanding what your discussions have been. So I'm just going to reiterate that. One of the things that, you know, and I appreciate Mr. Jordan asking for this to go first, as I did at the March 2nd meeting, because I felt like this discussion needed to be had to put the other proposals in context. And what I mean by that is, you know, we don't know that, you know, to Mr. Clayton's question or, or point, that, you know, if we had the money, you know, we would, I think the board would all agree that we would, you know, give everybody a raise, put people on the right step. But right now, I don't know that anybody on this board knows exactly what that dollar amount is, right? So, you know, and I keep hearing that we're beginning to address the compression issues, but that was a decision that was decided, you know, in 2016. We embarked on a study, we completed the study, the initial recommendations, and as I went back to watch that meeting again, to refresh my memory about what that was, you know, just specifically what that dollar amount was, because it wasn't in the presentation, but it was in the dialogue that the board collectively had and collaboratively had at the time. And so I wanted to go over and make sure that everybody here understood, you know, what was said at that time. So at that time, 75% of our employees were not on the right step. And that was, this is again, is in 2016. And this crossed all employee groups. And so when the question was asked by the board, you know, how much would it cost if we could snap our fingers and place everyone on the right step? The consultant at the time said, she, she cited exactly what it was. It would be $15 million to put our teachers on the right step. It would be 1.6 million for teacher assistance. It would be 1.5 million for school administrators and 4.8 million for classified staff and 1.3 million for other administrators. So bringing the total to about $24 million to put everybody on the right step. And so when I think about that, I know what the end is. Like that was at that time, we said, we started with the end in mind, which was that 24 million, which we knew at that time we didn't have, we truly didn't have that at that time. So we, we started on this multi-year plan. And so we began to address the compression at that time. And starting at least two or three years ago, we're like, okay, where, where are we today? I know board members, including myself, ask that question. What is the impact of implementing those recommendations today? Like where are we today? And, and how do we specifically target our bonuses or incentives, our, our raises to the groups that we know need greater attention? And so today, we have, we know that a study has been done, an updated study that would look at where we are today with the compression. And we don't have the study. So I don't understand how the board can really determine what is phase one, what is phase two, when we don't know, even know what the end, what the final findings are of that study. And so if, if we had truly, you know, addressed some of the compression over the last five years, and if initially it started out at 24 million, I would suspect that it's less than that, and right now we have a potential surplus of 20 million, I ask the question, like, can we put people on the right step right now? I mean, to me, when, so, so, and that decision impacts the bonus. Because a bonus of $1,600 one time, as someone said earlier today, will last about two weeks. Whereas putting people on the right step, you know, would impact them today, would impact their retirement and for years to come. And I think our teachers, you know, we talk about retention and attracting, I, and I know those of us who have been on the board for a while, we've been hearing time and time again, that our teachers that are in the 10 to 20-year range have been, have been feeling left behind as we have, you know, done these raises over the years. And again, as we heard tonight, you know, we're, we're really putting a lot of attention on new teachers and incentivizing, you know, new hires versus the teachers that we already have. And I can't think of anything more important than, than that, focusing on our employees to benefit our children. Because right now, our children need adults in the building, period. They need adults in the building. And I think we have the, the And I think we have the ability to do that now. And I wouldn't see us delay a vote on this budget until we get that data, look at that data, and then come back and make some smarter recommendations around how we're going to address the budget. So until we do that, I, right now, and I have a laundry list of other things that I want to see in this budget that supports, you know, the social and emotional, the mental health of our students, finally addressing later start times, I mean, come on, we've had so much change in the last two years. I don't know why we're not addressing that. We've talked about science and public health, and the later start times has been, I mean, every health agency has made that recommendation, including the American Academy of Pediatrics, and here we are still doing what is not developmentally appropriate. So I have a lot of other areas, but really, at the core are our employees. And so, I mean, at the core is our children, but without our employees, our children are not going to get what they need. So with that, if we are pushed to vote tonight, I am not going to vote in support of this budget.
Thanks, Ms. Bassin. Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
Well, I would like to have Dr. Bertson have the opportunity to respond to Ms. Bassin's comments.
Yeah, so, go ahead. I mean, what I'm-
It was a lot.
I know, it is a lot.
So I'm going to ask our expert, Mr. Billups, because he actually dealt with the compression, and so he's the expert in this area. And Mr. Jenkins, as you know, he wasn't here during that time. It's my understanding that there was another study that was completed, so I'm not sure why it wasn't fully implemented. I can't answer those questions. I have to deal with is before me now. And the situation of years and years of compression, I inherited, and I'm trying to solve this issue to the best of my ability. So I think it would be wise for the expert to take us back to what happened and why we are where we are today.
Mr. Billups, please.
So-
Thank you.
Just, if I can ask, I appreciate that, but Dr. Gabriel-
Mr. Billups, please.
And Dr. Martin, if it's-
Clanton, thank you, I'm sorry.
I also like to hear from Mr. Billups, but I, never mind. At some point-
I think it's important, because we do have, we have a study to address the compression, the step compression, and we have a bonus we're about to vote on, and incentive, lots of different incentives in here. So again, I think, I said this at our last meeting, where it's not just one, either or, we're actually combining a lot of different strategies. But go ahead, Mr. Billups.
I agree with you. My only point that I was trying to make is that, at some point, you know, the superintendent has turned over the budget to us. And at some point, the board has to be able to have an opportunity to have a board discussion about the board's budget. So I was a little caught off by the motion, but it is what it is.
So we can have a discussion.
But at the, at the last, at the last meeting we had, we heard from the administration for a very long time. We didn't have hardly any discussion as a board. I know we had the two-by-twos, that's still not a full board discussion. And actually, I was going to start off by even suggesting that we just come back on the 23rd and take the action and use this time tonight for the board to have a discussion. But I'm going to listen to Mr. Billups, but I'm going to have questions, because we've had the same discussion the last three years. And so I'd even pulled up when the board voted on priorities last year. And outside of, where we all had some individual priorities, one of the ones, because you put the map together, dealt with compensation and implementing the next phase of the pay and comp study. And so when we had the discussion last year about that, that's when we heard again that we really didn't have faith in the previous study, I weren't sure where it was, and that's why the new study was funded with the idea of having that study funded, I mean, completed, in time for us to have the discussion that we're now trying to have in this budget. So I have lots of questions about this, as we have this discussion, I think, for at least the third year in a row, because hearing, I've never heard before that we fully implemented the, the previous study, because I heard the exact opposite the last two, three years, when we started talking about index cards and we weren't sure where everybody was. So I just want to make sure that, because I'll stay here as long as we have to stay here, but that there is adequate time for the board to have a discussion outside of the Q and A.
Mr. Billups, can you bring us up to speed, please?
Okay, so I've heard the discussion regarding the previous study. What happened with that one back in December 2016, if we recall, those of us who were here? A study had been done at that time by Siegel Waters. And the concern was that there had not been any step movement within Norfolk Public Schools for a number of years. And so the goal became at that point to begin implementing the steps again over a four-year plan. That's exactly what happened from the years 2718 forward. So for four years, a step, a step was placed back into the plan, because there had not been any step movement in Norfolk Public Schools for many years. Just to take you back a little bit, starting in the year 2009, 2010, all the way up to 2011 and 12, the salaries were frozen here in Norfolk Public Schools. So there was no step movement, nor were there any types of raises given to the employees here. Then, in 2012, 2013, a decision was made then to give every employee three steps if they were here back in 2009, 2010. If they were, if you were here 2009, 2010, you got the three steps. If you were here 2010, 11, you got two steps. And if you were 11, 12, you got the one step, to try to catch you up at that point for not, for the salaries being frozen for three years. Then what happened was, in 2013, 2014, the school division started to give, steps were still frozen, but the school division started to still give a 2% COLA increase. So for 2013, 14, all the way up to the 2016, 17 school year, employees got a 2% increase added to their base, but there was no step movement. So you're looking at about eight years of salaries being frozen, then people being given some steps, but then being given an increase that was called a COLA, but still no step movement. So the study that was done for Siegel Waters was to address, to begin implementing steps. And that is what has happened in that particular study. Bringing us current now, the discussion was about implementing a study to address the compression that had been placed upon Norfolk Public Schools employees. So again, we've been working, the pay study team has been working with the consultant to begin addressing that. We have a preliminary report, which is based upon information we've been able to provide now, but we are waiting a final report so that we can continue to analyze the information and then spread it out over a, again, a four-phase approach, still trying to address compression and address those who have truly been compressed, because everyone is not necessarily compressed. So that's where we are, is that to look at that information, address those who are compressed by beginning the four-phase implementation of the study. So that's the information that I have as of today.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
Okay, so my question, last year in the budget, we did authorize not only a raise, but also a step increase, correct?
Correct.
Fact. Okay. The pay, the raises that are proposed in this budget cycle, average, meaning some will get more, some will get less, is approximately?
On their steps, on their scale.
Okay.
Whether it be a teacher, 10-month, 12-month, on their scale.
On their scale. And we're looking at an average of 5.8? 5.8%.
For teachers.
For teachers, for teachers. The additional $2 million that is set aside in the budget is to address the first phase with the preliminary data specifically for teachers? To be placed, start being placed on the correct step?
Well, this was a study to address compression, not just for teachers. So if we were to go with a, a proposal that would look at addressing the compression for all employees who were affected, whether they were teachers, non-classroom teachers, classified staff members, or administrators, then that first phase, if we were to go with this proposal, would be to look at all of those employees, because it was a compression study, not a teacher-only compression study. So that's where we, we are, you know, right now, looking at those employees. And because, as I said earlier, those years, when those salaries were frozen back in 2009, all the way up to the 2011, 2012 school year, when you want to address the compression, you look at those who were compressed. And those who would have been compressed would have been those who had higher dates based on those kind, those years in there. And that's what we will be looking at, because that's how it then was determined, if you were frozen, if you then, when they, when the school division decided to try to catch you up back in 12, 13, that's when it was decided, okay, whether or not you're going to get one step, two steps, or three steps. So we're looking at this in the, with the same methodology, because that's that compressed group that actually missed those, those steps. When we talk about putting individuals on, you know, a scale or, or the step placement and all of that, those who are coming into us, or came into us in the years, say, 17, 18 forward, they're on the step that we place them on based on our operating scale. Every school division has an operating scale of where they place the individuals when they come in. I'll say that I do not believe that everyone who states that they are placed on a one-to-one everywhere that they go, that that's actually a factual statement. I really don't think that that's actual.
It isn't.
And so, some kind of way, I think that, you know, because everybody has an operating scale, where, you know, you may be, three years may equate to one year in some places, or four years, I don't know. I've been in a situation before where people who were on a step, years of experience, one year all the way up to like six, were on the same scale. Because of the, back in those years, 2008, 2009, if you remember, when places weren't even giving raises, like Norfolk has that situation where that's part of those years also. So we have to really look at apples to apples and determine if the information that we are being given and that we are working with is actually true, or is it some kind of information that we're given that's not validated? And so that's how, how that is.
I understand, thank you.
Yes.
The, the, this board has very much been listening to teachers and staff with regards to the significance of the compression, to the significance of not being placed on the correct steps. And I greatly applaud the teachers and staff for coming and voicing these concerns, because that doesn't happen in a whole lot of other jobs, and I'll just say that. But we also know that it is the, the importance of having staff, highly qualified staff for our students every day, that is where we want to make the biggest investment. And so just the $2 million that we are starting with right now, that is going directly to what in the compensation for the steps? Can you tell us how that is going to address, just to start things? Because that's what's in the budget right now.
Phase 1.
And that would be, again, based on what we're looking at right now, taking that $2 million and spreading it among those groups of employees, not just teachers, who have been compressed, who truly have been compressed based on the higher date, because it's trying to reward the longevity of those who have actually been compressed.
Okay. And is there a reason, going back to the question of the ESSER funds, is there a reason why we cannot use those funds in order to address the compensation? I've heard multiple times that those are one-time funds. It's not fiscally responsible, because we've been in this situation before, when we petitioned the city to help us fund math and reading specialists, and they gave us the funds. But then we had to figure out how to fund those positions in the operating budget, year after year after year. And so while, going back to, if we could pour all of that money to address the compression, I don't think any of us would have a problem with that, because we know how valuable our teachers are. However, would we be able to sustain that? And I think that's the question that Mr. Jenkins and you and others are having to look at, the sustainability of it. And that is where I believe is the discussion point. Do we have the funds in our operating budget in order to address this compensation at the, at the scale that so many are asking us to address? It sounds like it has to be done over time, over these next four years, based upon what you have received. That's what I'm hearing when I, that's what I'm seeing when I read the report.
Ms. Campson has been very patiently waiting. So Ms. Campson, and then Ms. Bassin, and then Mr. Jordan.
Oh, thank you very much. My initial question was the exact same one that Dr. Gabriel brought up, which is, where does the $2 million that we have in there go next year? I'm still not clear what you're saying about, you said we'll be using it, I mean, did we choose? Like, if, who was, who was in our district in '09? And look at who had the greatest loss, would be the people that came on at the time all this started in '08, '09? Is that who we're going to start with? And, and when Ms. Bassin gave us the number of 20 million to solve the problem, that was my understanding of what you said.
I'm asking the question. Could that 20 million go to-
Well, that's what I said, but I just wanted to clarify that. So would 20 million solve this forever? Because this is so long, this is just dragged on, and the teachers are waiting, and they're feeling slighted, as they should. I mean, I was here in the middle of it too. I'll never get my money back. So I, you know, I know exactly how they feel when they cut and stop paying you, which is basically what they did. So my question is, would 20 million cover it, so at least we would have a place we knew we were going, or not? Would that take care of the teachers and the administrators and the clerical staff and the custodians? And we would be done with it if we had 20 million dollars?
And at this point, I would say, I can't, I can't say specifically if that would happen. I cannot say that.
Oh, because I wasn't sure where she might have gotten that, okay.
No, well, the, well, the 20 million, just since you said you didn't know where I got it from, that was where, that was the surplus that was cited by Mr. Jenkins.
Oh, the surplus. That was the surplus.
Right, right.
So that wasn't, so-
I think she said 24, I think that's what Ms. Bassin said.
No, I said 20, 20, it was 24 million in 2016.
Right, and you said 20 million was-
So if we had addressed some of it already, then where are we today? So I'm basically asking, what are the findings?
So you're kind of making a guess at the 20 million.
Well, I'm hoping it could be less than that, but-
But it was still a guess?
Right, it was a guess.
Okay, so we don't know for sure that this would solve it. But, you know, had, did we already designate where the surplus was going, Dr. Bertson?
Not for this year. No, because we don't even know what that is.
We're talking about last.
I'm talking-
In other words, so it hasn't been, it hasn't been committed, whatever the surplus is, we have not committed it to go anywhere?
Not for this year, because we don't even know what it is.
I understand, so.
Our surplus for this year, no, it has, we don't know.
So it's free, it's not committed to anything? So would it be a possibility for the board to pre-designate that money to go, whatever amount it is, to get us as far as we can down this road to finish this off? Is that something that's even doable?
You're suggesting, again, to use one-time funds to sustain salaries?
Say it again?
You're again suggesting one-time funds to sustain-
Oh, they are one-time funds again.
Ms. Bassin?
Yeah, okay.
Well, I think it's important to clarify what, I think exactly what I was hoping to get at, is based on the current findings, what is that total amount? What is the amount that would put, you know, our employees on the right step?
Right, and can I finish first, since I did have a floor with the question I have, and then we can move to yours? It appears that what we're saying is, okay, it's one-time funds, but it's not encumbered to have to be used in any particular way. It's, they're calling upon us to say it's good practice not to use one-time funds. And I, I understand that.
We, we don't want to.
So, so what happens here is, is we either going to feel the pain ourselves, or the teachers and other staff members are going to feel the pain again, is what I'm saying. So, yes, we've used the one-time funds, and it's going to really catch us in the next couple of years, but is it up to, is it, does it continue after over 10 years for it to be the employees who have to have the burden of that, rather than us trying to figure out what to do? Does that make, I, I don't know.
I'm not under, I'm not following you, I'm sorry.
Well, what we're saying is.
Well, so we can either use the money now, and just decide next year with the budget, if we're running short in the operating budget, in order to.
Then it'll be our problem, it won't be the problem of our employees, is what I'm saying. In other words, the employees are suffer, suffering decisions that were made, and I do understand that it was the unions that pushed for this to begin with, was my understanding. But what, wherever it came from, it seems like the burden of paying it back is falling on the backs of the people who lost it. And so, it would seem like, and I know it's terrible, terrible economics, but it just seems like to continue year after year, and the gap gets bigger and bigger because we do front-load first-year teachers. We front-load it because we're recruiting them. And so that's a big recruitment thing, because we front-load, and we give them bonuses for signing, and we used to give, and one year we used, we gave laptops out. They get something for signing up, and the people that are here, the veteran teachers, don't get that. So I think it's something to consider. I, my concern right now is, we have a deadline, is my understanding, is it this due to the city? Our budget due to the city?
Yeah, April 1st.
April 1st. Oh, okay.
But I, it is not good practice to use one-time funds for ongoing financial commitments.
I, I know that.
And you run the risk of not being able to honor that commitment in the future. So we need to find a more sustainable revenue source to be able to address the, you know, the pay increases and, and actually sustain them.
But we're putting the burden on the employees, they're the ones that are suffering year after year, and the gaps get bigger and bigger and bigger, and they're angry, and this is not a good time to make your teachers angry. And they're angry with reason. I'm feeling it, I'm feeling all the money I could have had.
I'm pretty sure teachers don't want to be going through this fight again next year.
Neither do I.
I, that's what I'm saying, we need to find a more, a sustainable way to honor the commitment. And what I'm hearing is we're going to implement, um, phase one, is, we're asking for the.
And that will affect, how many, how many employees will get money from the $2 million? How many employees will be touched by that?
At this point, it looks like it would be approximately 1,847 employees.
That would be getting some step, not, would they get, I assume with just $2 million, they won't get everything, but they'll get, they'll get money coming in to get them up to a higher step, even if it's not to where they exactly place they're supposed to be?
Yes, they.
So over 1,000 of our employees, this $2 million would get over 1,000 of our, our employees some raises in their steps?
Yes.
And do the teachers already know, or the, I'm not just teachers, I'm sorry, all the employees already know if they're getting it or not?
No.
No, so they don't know, some of the people that spoke.
They haven't voted yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't know, because you haven't voted yet.
Yeah, but, but, but they might have seen it on the budget.
Sure.
Right, okay. All right, so what we're saying is, that $2 million is going to, going to be affect over 1,000 of our, how many employees do we have?
1,200?
Almost like.
Yeah, but they're not all 5,000 in this, because you had to be hired back then. If you, if you signed up in the last decade.
Okay.
You're not affected. Okay. I just want to know that we're, we're starting something that's concrete, not fantasy land, next year we'll do it, oh, oh, well, we didn't manage it now, so next year, and then the next year. That we will definitely be, people will definitely be receiving step raises that are paid for by that $2 million.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And to be clear, you, you are aware that for the, at least the last couple of years, our teachers have received a step, or employees generally, a step increase in a raise.
But a step increase, they would have gotten if they were, we were doing yearly steps. So those don't really go back and, and take care of what they missed.
We're not adding to the compression, that's the point.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is, if we give them a step every year, that's what they're supposed to be getting anyway.
That's right.
So that doesn't make it up to the people that missed their steps?
That's right.
Even those that are retired probably would qualify for, not just kidding. All right, I feel, all right, I just wanted to make sure we're doing something, I was afraid the $2 million was going to administrations or things. Teachers are going to see those, and it's going to be pointed out to them, here's your step for this year, and here's two more steps, or three more steps, is that correct?
Yes, I mean, they would be, if they were in that first lane, or that first year, we've identified approximately 1,800 individuals.
Okay.
And then they would be informed as to what they actually would get based on the methodology of how this would progress.
Okay, so people are going to get it this year?
If this proposal goes through, Ms. Campson?
And a 5.8% raise, too, correct?
That is correct.
5% raise, the coming year, years.
That's 5.8% for teachers.
And then the new step that's going to come from this.
7.4% for classified staff.
Yes.
Okay.
4.2% for administrators.
And maybe next year we'll be able to put a little more money into it to hit more of them, and get this done.
But Ms. Bassin, Mr. Jordan, Mr. Clanton, Dr. Allison, do you have, you want to be put on the list?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
So, I, I just, I just want to make a quick comment, because I want to let my colleagues that haven't spoken very much on this topic yet speak, but, you know, I, I have to say, I am, I am really disheartened with this discussion because if we had the data in front of us, I think we would be able to make a much more informed decision. And I'm really disappointed that we are sitting here with a recommendation of implementation, and we're sitting here trying to guess what, you know, we're just, we're just getting numbers without a report, we're getting, it's, it's just, you know, I'm a very data-driven, I try to be as data-driven as possible to inform my decision-making process, and to me, it's just, it's honestly unacceptable for the board to be, um, in this position. It feels extraordinarily uncomfortable with millions of dollars. And I just, I'm going to end there and let Mr. Jordan go.
Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Um, I'm not exactly sure where to start, but I agree with the last comments Ms. Bassin made. We're having, I appreciate Ms. Campson's question, and we're having conversations with no report, no data, no information, it's, it's not, uh, being deliberate, because, working on how I speak to people. Um, it, it's, it's just, it's dysfunctional. There is no way, we, we have in this proposed budget probably more hundreds of millions of dollars than Norfolk schools has probably ever had. We're trying to have a conversation about compression and step increases, and 100, 1,847 employees, whoever they are, something about a first lane, something about $2 million, we have no idea what we're talking about. We have no data in front of us that puts us in a position to know what in the world that we're talking about, and that's frightening to me. Um, I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Billups or Dr. Birdsong, and then I'd like to try to get back to the conversation with the board. So, Mr. Billups, uh, I have the chart where we were working on the fiscal years with the, uh, history of salary increases. That's probably the same chart you were reading from that we received at a presentation, you may have emailed it to us, I don't know where it, you know, I can't recall, I just happened to find it on my laptop today. So it shows what you described. Fiscal year '07, all employees received a step increase. '08, 4%. '09, teachers received a step increase. 2010, so this is the Great Recession, salary frozen due to budgetary issues. You also may remember, around that time, there was this BART group, uh, somewhere in here, there was a BART group, um, what was the superintendent that came from Texas?
Dr. Bentley.
Dr. Bentley was, was dealing with this, I remember, Dr. Birdsong was part of that team, and they came up with these recommendations, and we were dealing with, at least the school system was dealing with, um, potential layoffs and rifts and all that. So that's in that period. And we had stimulus money that came in to try to forestall layoffs and so forth. So fiscal year 2010, salary frozen due to budgetary issues. Fiscal year 2011, salaries frozen due to budgetary issues, but employees received one-time bonus pay. Fiscal year 2012, salary frozen due to budgetary issues. Fiscal year 13, employees hired on or before fiscal year 2009 received a three-step salary increase equivalent to 7%.
This is all recap. This is what Mr. Billups was saying earlier. I mean, go ahead, it's just, it is recap.
I didn't, I say here, I didn't interrupt anybody else.
No, I'm just saying to myself, that I've just heard this.
Okay. Well, I'm going through it for my own benefit, if that's all right.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure, like I said, we don't have these conversations together. So, I'll skip ahead then, since everybody, since some people feel I'm just repeating what you've already heard. Then we got, at this time, fiscal year 2020 proposed, uh, actually in fiscal year 20, in fiscal year 2018, it said, first phase of pay study. That's when we created the 30-step scale. Then we went to 2019, teachers received a step increase, then we were at that time, fiscal year 2020. So, Mr. Billups, I, I want you to help me go back to the Segal Waters study and the comments that I thought I heard you make. So are you saying that the study that was done by Segal Waters, where they did the estimates, as Ms. Bassin mentioned, around what it would cost in one fell swoop to deal with not just a pay step for everyone, but to deal with the issue around compression? Are you saying that that information that we got at that time was incorrect?
I can't say that it was incorrect, but I knew that the funding wasn't there, and so the issue was that there were not, steps had not been implemented within this school division for many years, and as I, as you laid out, is laid out in this chart. So, part of that goal was to implement the steps back in place, and that's what happened with that particular study. And overall, based on the findings from that group, it would have cost upwards of, like, like has been stated, 24 million or so to try to do anything more or different.
Right.
And the school division did not have the funding.
Right, so when you said the school division did not have the funding, the school division did not have the funding at that time to do what?
To work towards giving individuals more than one step, um, per, over a four-year period, a step each year. There was, funds were not identified to be able to do anything more.
Right, so we didn't, we didn't have funding to do the steps while also addressing compression, is that correct?
I believe so.
Right, because the, the recommendations from the December 16, 2016 presentation that we had from Segal Waters stated, "We suggest that you consider the following steps to ensure NPS continues to offer market-competitive and internally equitable compensation for all educators and staff." One was modify pay grade assignments for positions that were found to be paid below market. Two was investigate options for restoring pay steps for educators and staff whose step placement is below expected based on years of service, experience, and qualifications." So when that came to the board, and we started talking about the first phase, my understanding for all that time has been that we were not just offering a step increase, we were trying to be intentional around step increases and dealing with the issue of compression. So, to me, that is the recommendation that we received, and that the.
Not hurting us badly.
Uh, issue, as we were phasing it in, was that we didn't have, whatever it was, 24 to 40 million dollars to accomplish that task. So we started to break it up in phases so that we could eventually get there. So, I just want to make sure that, that you can correct me again, because I thought I heard you say that the Segal Waters study was just addressing steps and was not addressing compression.
I would have to go back and review all of that now, but I know that, again, the goal was, because steps had not been implemented in this division for many, many years, so the goal was to get the steps, put steps back in, and that's what happened.
So, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, the board had a conversation with the superintendent and the administration, because the board set the goal of asking the superintendent to come back and tell the board, based upon the goal that the board established, to address compensation dealing with compression. That was a board goal, that's why you still see it in the accountability plan, and that's been this board's goal. So over the past two or three budget cycles, when I asked the question around, how are we doing towards progressing with the recommendations of the pay and comp study, then a couple of times we had some discussions, because if I recall correctly, uh, and this is moving towards, uh, one year of service, one step. Because in the Segal Waters presentation, at that time, they did an analysis of the surrounding districts, and they showed on the, in the study, what they believed to be the case of what each district was doing. So I don't remember, at that time, anyone questioning the accuracy of the analysis that they, that they did. And the reason why this is important to me, because I don't understand this concept that, you know, on the one hand, we completed it, but we know we haven't completed it. On the one hand, everything that existed prior to a certain date no longer applies, but then sometime it does apply. So, do we know right now, yeah, whatever time it is now, today, uh, what step every employee is on?
It's tomorrow.
We know what step, yes, we know what step they're on.
Okay.
Um, yes, everybody is on a step.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we know how far every employee is from the step that they're on to their years of service?
No, because the school division has had an operating scale since the 1990s that said years of service do not equate to step placement.
Okay, so, the past times, I thought, when I was asking this question before, then I would ask the question, can you tell us what you need in order to get that done? And I, my recollection was, and this is where I'm being snarky, because I thought it was something said about index cards, that I thought it was said, that it would take a certain amount of effort for human resources to go through every single file in order to update whatever it was that you said needed to be updated, so we could have a solid baseline upon which to have this discussion. Am I correct? And there was something around, it would take a certain amount of effort to go through every file to accomplish a particular goal?
That's not completely accurate.
Okay, can you correct me?
What it is, is that the school division has had different systems over the years. Um, they went to the current system that is, is, is in place right now, I believe in 2006. Prior to that, it was a different type of system that was, um, was in place. I think the messaging has always been that it's not really possible to go back that many years in those different types of systems to come up with every single person being on a year-for-year basis, because there are more nuances placed in there other than just finding index cards or the old system. You have individuals that have, have left the school division, come back, individuals that had been in other positions, then went to another position, and then maybe became a teacher. It's, it's so many nuances in there. And the thing about that is, is that you can't. And the thing about that is, is that you can't go out and just get resources, meaning people, to think we can bring them in and they learn how to figure and find all that out because it's so many different pieces and parts to determining a person's actual history. Um, I've been in a location before where that was attempted and the data that came back from that was not useful at all. Because trying to bring someone in to just begin talking to them about looking through old records and old files, the validity of what you're going to get um may not even be reliable.
Right. But when I, when I was asking this question the last few years, and maybe I'll ask it this way. In the Segal Waters study, where they presented charts based upon the analysis that they did, and they showed, for example, just happened to have a chart from page forty, just stopped on it. It says classified employee distribution. Distribution of current MPS classified staff by years of service and pay step. I think I asked this before and I'm even more confused now. How did, how was Segal Waters able to put this chart together at that time where they thought they knew the, where the employees were? It has on the uh, guess vertically, uh the, I think that's the Y-axis, it shows years of service. On the X-axis, it shows pay step. And then there are dots which I thought represented every classified employee on this particular chart of where they fell against years of service and pay step. What data source did Segal Waters use in order to produce this chart?
I cannot answer that right now. I would need to have to go back to that study from twenty sixteen and perhaps even speak with the consultant from that time.
Okay. So where, where, where part of my frustration is with this conversation is in my view, I've heard that same response three years. The, the, at the time, when we were talking about the twenty-four million, whatever the million was, it was, as I understood at the time, what it would take to move employees uh so that it was one step, one year. And the study breaks it down by different areas. So one chart shows that on this particular one, seventy-nine percent of classified staff are in a pay step lower than expected based, lower than expected based on their years of service. Eight hundred and forty-nine individuals.
In twenty sixteen?
At the time of this study, that's correct. Then it would go, it goes on. It talks about or describes administrators. And so it shows administrators. And it says sixty-three percent of administrators are in a pay step lower than expected on their years of service. Seventy-nine individuals. And the, the presentation in the study goes on for all these different classifications. So the question around what if we had the money? So when you look at these other recommendations that are coming forward, and the reason why I always will often ask about where are we in terms of unexpendable funds? If I understand it correctly, we largely have unexpendable funds uh as it deals with the line that Mr. Jenkins was talking about earlier, salaries and benefits. Because we either have vacant positions or because we have had turnover. A, a veteran employee.
What, I mean, it'd be vacant positions. So when you say turnover.
Well, okay, so vacant, vacant position, if uh if Ms. Campson was in the classroom, her value in the classroom would be a hundred times mine. I would be a substitute, long-term sub. She would be a highly effective veteran teacher doing what she does. So if I replaced, if Ms. Campson, for whatever reason, left and I was put in the position that she was in, there would be a delta between the cost that we had budgeted for, for Ms. Campson to do what she does versus me becoming a long-term substitute in her position, there would be a delta.
Yeah, but she's still a vacancy.
Let's, follow me for a moment.
Okay.
There would be a gap between how much we were expending to pay Ms. Campson as a veteran teacher, wherever she was, right? How much would it cost to pay her? She's no longer in that position. She leaves and goes to greener pastures and she takes a tour around the world for two years. I step in her place.
I want to join his.
If it was costing the district two hundred dollars an hour to pay Ms. Campson and it's now costing the district thirty dollars an hour to pay me.
You were already being paid before, though.
No, 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 no. I'm a substitute. I wasn't an employee. Okay? The point is, is that the delta between what the district was paying and had budgeted for Ms. Campson, when she leaves, that budget amount is still there. The actual of what I'm being paid as a substitute is much lower than what we budgeted for Ms. Campson in that same position. So at the end of the year, we are continuing to have on the budget line Lauren Campson. In reality, in the actual line, we have Rodney Jordan. At the end of the year, there's going to be unexpendable funds because we budgeted for Ms. Campson, but we paid Rodney Jordan.
Right.
Follow me on that?
Yeah, I, I felt, I'm sorry, at first I thought you were both teaching in the same school. That's how I understood it, but you're saying you weren't, you weren't, you weren't a substitute when she was a teacher and now you're a substitute in her place. Okay.
So at the end of the year, when you look at the salaries and benefits and these unexpendable funds that we have, because we know that seventy-plus percent of our entire budgets deal with personnel. At the end of the year, you have these unexpendable funds because of vacancies or because of the, at least in part, because of the scenario where we budgeted at one level, but our actuals are at a, at a different level. So then we come to the end of the year. And so we say we have a, an unexpendable fund balance. So Mr. Jenkins was projecting for the year that we're in now could be upwards of twenty million dollars. Okay? So let's say we ended this year with twenty million dollars. Then we'll have a discussion around, well, we don't want to spend the twenty million dollars on one-time funds. So what we've, what we're doing and what we have in these other proposals is to take the unexpendable operating funds and either switch them to capital, switch them to buildings, right? Or in this case, one of the proposals is to give bonuses. But I think the question that I thought Ms. Campson was asking, Ms. Basina's asked, and I'm asking, if we know we have tens of millions of dollars now and it could go to putting uh staff on the correct step, what would that cost? And then we also know then going forward, because we would do that, now where we have put people on the correct step, as we work on the future operating budget, now the operating budget is going to look different if we, if we do that. I'm not saying it's going to be perfect, but it's going to look different because now going forward, the cost of those employees that we put on the right step going forward are going to be a part of our operating budget. Okay? That's the sustainability piece. So the conversation about using one-time funds and how that's not the best way of doing it and dealing with the step and the compression issue, I don't personally see that as parallel. And I'm gonna give you another example, and this was the questions that I had. So in one of the proposals, it calls for us to earmark uh three million dollars of what we think, what we, what we think we are going to have in uh fund balance going forward. And that the board now designate whatever it is, the next five years, the next ten years, that three million dollars, and Dr. Gabriel touched on this at the last meeting, for uh school construction. So we are projecting already that in that scenario, apparently a proposal offered by the city manager that we haven't seen yet, that we would then automatically say, on the operating side, we're going to designate three million dollars of unexpendable funds and designate it for school construction. We could very well take three million dollars and designate it to pay compression. So I just, I just think that we should have and we need to have and we need to know now because we pushed this off the last couple of years when I raised the same issue. We need to know now what the study that was just done, that they're still analyzing, what is that study telling us in terms of how much it's going to cost to put people on the right step, in my words, so that we are in the one-year, one-step, one-year area? That's, that's what we need to know. Because if we put, if we take the money that we currently have and we put it all in bonuses, and I had teachers emailing me, I know you all got emails too, about, "Mr. Jordan, why aren't you excited about the, the recommendation for the bonus?" And we had exchanges back and forth, back and forth. And I literally said to them, "It's not that I'm not excited about the bonus. I want to try to give you a bonus. I want you to be, I want the compression dealt with, and I want you to get whatever other step that you get." And some of the teachers, as they are individuals, as they responded to me, at least a couple of them wrote, "We don't have faith that North Public Schools is ever going to do anything about the compression." So that's why we're saying at least give us the bonus. I don't want to do that. I think this board needs to know, just as we thought we knew before, exactly what is it going to take with the current employees that we have on record right now to move them in such a way that we eliminate compression and that we are placing them on a path that the board would establish as a policy that would set it so that one year of service equals one step. And without that information, everything else that we're doing is just fool's gold.
So when I read um under salary increase, compensation study implementation phase one, I'm reading that that right there is what we're trying to get at. We're trying to implement, they're asking for us to support the implementation of what the study recommends, which addresses um steps and co, and um, and compression.
Phase one towards what? What's the, what's the, what's the in, work backwards. What's the total number?
To start to address exactly what you're saying, to correct it and to have sustainable funding streams moving forward based on, on the compensation study. They wanted to implement the study over four years.
What's the in number? Just like, you know, we all, Ms. Campson is an expert at this. When she was taking us all through the accountability plan, Ms. Campson was adamant about goals. We want to achieve X. We're at X. We want to achieve Y. By when? So I'm asking.
Do you, do you have the goals that were set out for the compensation study concerning, can you speak to, I mean, verbatim, what was?
No, I don't have that in front of me at this point.
Phase one of a four-year plan.
Right, but it was in the study.
The goal to be done in four years?
So by the end of four years, we will have.
Just completely done. Is that, is that what?
And what's the goal?
But we don't know what that is, which is.
What's the target?
What is the target number? What, how many, how many employees are we talking about?
Eighteen hundred.
How, no, that is for the phase one. See, that's, that's exactly what we are getting confused.
You said eighteen hundred.
He said eighteen hundred and then he says something about first plan.
In the first, first year, the first phase, it would um impact approximately one thousand eight hundred and forty-seven employees um composed of it, of um the teachers, classified staff, as well as administrators.
So that's for the first year. So that means, means that there are other people there that we don't get to with this first year, the two million. You're getting to eighteen hundred.
First group, this first year.
So how many are there that are actually in this? Do we know how many people it have, it, because it's not impacting people who, who are long gone.
Yes.
I won't get any.
Right.
So it's, you have to, sorry. Oh, these masks. It, in other words, we need to know who's actually here that's participating because people that are retired or moved on to other jobs, we're not, we, that's, we're not looking at those people. We're here, the people that are still here that were working when all this started. Although it sounded to me like you said, there was a different system in the past where we weren't getting steps every year, back in the nineties or something?
No, I didn't say in the nineties.
I was.
Um, the data that I have goes as far back as.
But we don't need to go that far. We only need to go back to oh nine, right?
Oh, oh, oh nine, ten.
Yeah, that's where, that's our start time.
Yes.
We're only looking at years, steps missed since the oh nine, ten school year.
And forward, because those are the individuals who were, were compressed.
And then, and then we stopped the compression in year twenty fifteen, is what you said?
Twenty seventeen, eighteen is when step raises were implemented again.
I remember that was whenever we were, we came on the board and I have to say, we were in a much worse situation then. I mean, it was.
But so we have a ten-year thing. So the people who were here for that ten years, or any time in that ten years, would be included in this, but it wouldn't be always from oh nine. It would be from whenever they joined.
Yes, it would be by, by their higher date.
But it would be people who were actually physically in the building sometime between twenty-ten and twenty-eighteen, did you say?
What's the question?
Oh, how many, I'm trying to get to how many people are still involved because it seemed like that was something that you were saying was too hard to do. But at this, too hard because you kept talking about going into the distant past. It sounded to me like I could have misunderstood. So we'd only need to look at people that were here for the, sometime in this time that it happened. We don't need to look at anyone before that or anyone now.
Well, we're looking at, starting with the two thousand nine, two thousand ten year.
Right.
Because that's when individuals who were here um had salaries frozen. If they're still here, then they're, they weren't, the salaries were frozen.
And their steps were frozen.
Their steps were frozen, and then they got two percent COLA increases if they're still here, but they still never got the steps.
I just remember my step being frozen. That's what I remember, my step being frozen. I was a principal for fifteen years and I have nine steps. So I'm very aware of what step.
I think I said the floor.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an incident motion at this particular point.
Mr. Mr. Plank, I still hit the floor.
Mr. Jordan.
Appreciate it.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Jordan. I didn't mean to take your time.
Ask another question. The study that you currently have, does the study that you currently have tell you how many employees are compressed as it relates to one year of service to one step?
I don't have the full report, so I can't, I can't say yes and I can't say no.
Okay, this.
Why are we looking back though to the distant past? We were looking.
I'm not looking at, I'm saying the study that we have right now that is being recommended, that two million dollars impact. So Mr. Phillips hadn't seen the full study. Has anyone seen the full study?
It hasn't been completed. I think that's what he said when he came to the podium.
Okay.
That it had not yet, it has not yet been completed.
Okay, so as of, as of right now.
We just, again, we understand that the study, Mr. Jordan, hasn't been completed. But we were committed to showing some action this, during this budget cycle to make a difference with the compression. So that's why we made the recommendation that we did, even though we still, the study has not been provided to us, the completed study.
Okay, that's, okay.
As I mentioned before, we wanted to show some action so that our teachers and staff realize they are valuable, valuable to us. And we wanted to move to get something done to show our commitment to them.
The one thousand eight hundred and forty-seven, is that based upon the study or that's based upon internal analysis?
That's based upon um some internal analysis that we've done based, based upon some of the preliminary information that we have.
I uh think we should do more as a board. And um I haven't, I haven't heard anything that suggests um that the Segal Waters study was flawed. Um, obviously, the, where, where individuals are right now has changed because we know. Um, obviously, the, where, where individuals are right now has changed, because we know we've had quite a bit of senior staff leave, and we know we've hired quite a number of new staff. Um, but if we're going to have this conversation, I don't think $2 million is enough. Uh, there's another proposal where we are recommending taking unexpendable funds and put $2 million in some special superintendent fund, um-
A contingency fund.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
I think Mr., I know Mr. Jenkins explained it during the last work session, that that's for unseen emergencies.
I just want to finish.
I just don't want it to be characterized as some kind of secret fund I'm trying to have.
I didn't, I didn't say any of that. The, what I said, what I'm trying to, the conversation I'm trying to have with my board colleagues on the board's budget is there, there's money that is a result of unexpendable funds that's being designated. $2 million for a contingency fund, $3 million for school construction, for an agreement that we've not reviewed, other recommendations, bonuses and so forth. What I'm trying to get us to do is really have a qualitative conversation around the goal that we had previously established around addressing, uh, compression. And I'm very, I wish, I really was hoping we were going to spend some time also talking about how the budget moves us towards student outcomes. Because we have, we spent, we've spent all this time right now talking about, you know, compensation, and obviously, we don't get student outcomes without, without teachers. But we haven't, we haven't had that conversation as well.
No, I'm, I just, this whole conversation about the compensation study implementation, I'm hearing you say you're not, you don't have enough information to move forward on it, on this recommendation, which would mean that by the time the, all of the information is gathered, will be post-time to implement this budget. So then that sets us another year off. I just, I'm, I'm really, all right, well-
What I, what I originally, what I originally said was, let's discuss this more than at one meeting, so that we could have this discussion along the way.
But there's no more data that's going to show up at another meeting. You have everything in front of you, and you had it for two weeks.
I have no idea, because I did not know that the study wasn't completed until we got the presentation two weeks ago.
Did you have, you've had two weeks to have a one-on-one, two-by-two, whatever you want to call it? You have had time to ask questions, and I didn't see any questions go by email, and I know that you didn't meet with Dr. Birdsong or Mr.-
So, so number one, I did send questions via email, and I thought I copied you on them.
As did I.
You did respond.
Yeah, except the last one. And at least I didn't see it, but I was traveling, so it's possible that I missed it. Number, number two, two-by-twos are helpful, really helpful, going into the process. So a good way of using a two-by-two is give the board a heads-up. I'm coming forward with a recommendation for X, Y, Z, and I want the board to know this is what I'm doing, why. So when the board then receives the budget, the board can have the conversation. Receiving the budget proposal for the very first time, two weeks ago, and then saying to the board, "Well, now you've got two weeks to go read it, understand it, and schedule two-by-twos, and then come back and vote on the same night," is just, nobody does that.
I'll say, since I've been on the board, I have not gotten a heads-up meeting. It's been the same process. And I have two-by-twos with the proposed budget.
And to be clear, the administration was very transparent about this presentation on March the second. It was published to all board members and to the public way in advance.
There's no question about it was posted. Two weeks is not, or three days is not ahead of the meeting, is not, I don't, I don't want to be in the, this is why I'm trying to have a discussion with the board and not the superintendent, because I don't want to be in the position where it seems like I'm battling for with the superintendent. I'm not doing that. But I am trying to have a conversation with my board colleagues. We have to set the goal. We had goals last year that we all voted on, and in that goal, in those goals, it had things like compensation, math and reading specialist, gifted teacher in every classroom, all these things we talked about. So whatever you want to say about whatever your experience is with the process, I'm telling you, the board went through the process and established goals. This year, we did not do that. This year, we said, "Dr. Birdsong knows how we feel."
We said that last year as well.
I'm-
And, and also, these are the goals that the board has adopted from our accountability plan. That is what this, this budget was based around.
How do you know that?
Because Dr. Birdsong-
Told you.
Said it. It's in the, it's in the, um, the beginning of the, the budget book. I mean, it explains it.
So when I look at the map-
It's in the presentations.
So when I look at the map that we did and the vote that we had last year that I pulled up on Board Docs that showed that we had it in the consent agenda, the board's priorities from the mapping that you did as, as our chair, you're saying what? That we did not do that?
I don't know.
Why are we, why are we going back to the back?
It's, it's face off our-
Point of order, point of order. Because I attempted to, to close this discussion and to move this board around whether or not we're going to take action on this thing tonight, or we're going to delay. It is almost 11:15 at night. We have had, honestly, um, an exhaustion of discussion around one particular item in here, and we really need to make a determination at this particular point if we're going to take some action on this tonight, or we are going to delay, uh, to potentially next week and to have additional conversation. Um, but to continue to, to do this drawing out and, and maximizing one is just, it's, it's not good. So we, honestly, I attempted to try to allow to go in there, but I'm, I'm, I just want to, because I know that, how many of y'all had a two-by-two to ask questions? Just raise your hand. Okay. So-
I attempted to have.
I, I understand.
There was an emergency.
But there just comes a particular point, I understand that there's some things that are there, and I just would like to just poll my colleagues. If we held this off for a special meeting on the 23rd, are there any potential conflicts?
Yes.
Okay, but not just-
The student hearing.
No, no, I'm just asking a question.
Not just conflicts, it's, are, is, is Mr. Billups or the administration going to be able to deliver enough information to satisfy Mr. Jordan's question?
I'm, I'm just talking about that particular piece, because I mean, we, we've got student outcomes. Unfortunately, I believe that that particular piece, we knew we weren't going to get this additional information. It's been presented to us, nothing's in there. It's saying that, it clearly states on Slide 13 that we're continuing the study and that this is a first step to move towards it. The superintendent just said to us that this was a good faith demonstration to our, uh, to, to our staff that we're trying to address this. We don't have all the information. We're not going to get it within one week. But we haven't had a discussion amongst this entire board about student outcomes and some of the other things that are going in there. So this is why I'm speaking up at this particular point. Are we going to take some action tonight, or are we going to have another week that we're going to try to come back or whatever? We know that we have an April 1st deadline.
And we're not missing the deadline.
And we can't miss the deadline. We have to do that by law. But this, you know, we have other things that are on the agenda, and I just think forty minutes with one member is, is just unacceptable. We need to spread it out, and, and if we need more time to have conversation, then let's do that.
Well, I recommend that we defer. I also like to note that as the maker of the motion, you started, and then I had questions.
No, because we're in a business-
And, and then I also think-
We're doing the same thing, though. We're looking back and forth.
I'm trying, I like to have a, a back and forth with my board and not with-
You mean your colleagues?
Administration, yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah.
We still have other items to discuss.
With my board colleagues.
Yes.
And, uh, because I think that's what happens when the superintendent recommends a budget to the board, and then it's the board's responsibility to decide on the board's budget that gets submitted to City Council. So that's why I don't want to have, I'm not asking the administration to come give me magical answers next week. Uh, what I like for is to have the board to have the discussion, so we can decide what we're going to do.
Okay. So, um, I don't think we're going to be able to come to a good decision tonight, so we can table this and have a special meeting next Wednesday.
Remembering that you're going to have to let the student support people know that we're canceling.
What time is that?
I'm not voting on delaying this. I'm, I'm ready, I mean, I'm in favor of taking the vote tonight.
I'm sorry I missed that, because I was talking out of turn. How close?
All right, well, we have, we have a motion. I'm, I'm ready to, I'm ready to vote. Um, we have a motion on the, on the floor. So we'll go ahead and vote. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
First of all, I think to call for the question, it takes two-thirds. So first, you need to make sure you have two-thirds to end the discussion.
Call the question. Call a roll, roll call vote to in favor of call the question, which means to end debate on this discussion and to move to an immediate vote. Call the roll.
The same.
If you're not sure, ask for clarification.
In favor of closing discussion, that's what we're asking for.
Nay.
Okay.
Closing discussion.
Close the debate and move to a vote. It's either I-
Oh, stop the discussion now, and so this would be an I. Okay.
I.
I.
Nay.
I.
I.
Call the question.
Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
For all the reasons I stated earlier, I, I think this is a real, uh, dangerous situation to be in, and I will not be voting in support of this, at this time.
Yay, yay, yes.
Yay.
I, I, it's too late. It's too late for my mind to be working.
I'm voting in favor of this budget. It's not perfect, but it is a great start and meets the major needs that we, and goals that we've established. I.
I.
Uh, I'm not sure if we're voting on the operations budget, if we're voting on the-
We're voting on item-
Let me, let me finish.
Seven point zero three.
Well, you can respond after I-
Seven point oh three, I think.
So seven point oh three in the proposed budget has, uh, operational, it has, uh, capital in there, so I assume we are voting on all of that.
We're voting on all.
Okay. So I think it is, um, highly irresponsible, uh, for the board to vote on a budget without full information, and the board's taking its time to discuss it, no matter how much time we spent tonight. We probably spent more time on presentation. So a- absolutely not, and I, I just think it's just irresponsible on our part, and we're shirking our duties as a board by doing so. So absolutely not. No, nay.
I.
I. Okay. Moving on to item seven point zero four is employee appreciation bonus.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the recommendation of the superintendent regarding the $2,500 appreciation bonus for staff, presented by the superintendent.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Um, open for discussion.
Madam Chair, I move that we limit discussion to three minutes.
Is this, are we voting? Is this the appreciation bonus?
Yes.
Okay, I'm losing track here.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move that we limit debate to three minutes in its entirety on the item.
I'm going to say five minutes.
Five minutes, okay, that's fine. Five minutes on the entirety of the item.
Can I get a second?
My second.
Thank you, Dr. Ralston. Go ahead, or do it, put it to a vote.
What? I thought you just said we're going to have five minutes.
The discussion to five minutes.
So then are you going to have discussion?
Five-minute discussion. We're voting on it.
Okay.
You can say yay or nay.
Okay, so I've got a question for, for you, Madam Chair.
Point of order. There's a motion on the floor. Is this a point of inquiry, or, because we're still in a formal business meeting.
I'm not sure.
Are you just a point of inquiry of the chair?
What I'm asking is, if you allotted five minutes for discussion, I'd like to have discussion.
We're taking a vote on that, because we have to have a two-thirds vote in order to do that. Remember, you just mentioned that.
Yeah, we're just, we're voting on the discussion, we're limiting discussion to five minutes.
You got to vote on it first.
Limiting, whether to limit yay or nay. Yay means limit discussion to five minutes, nay means no.
I'm just doing that in the essence of time. It's after 11:00, that's all.
We've already discussed this. All right, Ms. Tanner.
I'm voting nay. Putting the budget together is one of our most important responsibilities.
This is the employee appreciation.
I, I know, but it is all connected, so I'm voting nay.
Well, this is, this is, you-
I understand very well what it is.
Okay, just making sure. Go ahead, Ms. Campson.
I.
I.
Nay.
I.
I. Okay. Begin discussion, and-
Five minutes.
Any discussion about, go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
A one-time bonus, it may, may sound like a thank you, but a commitment to our teachers that goes well beyond 1,600, that goes well beyond this year, is, I think, the real thank you. We say every year, we have asked our legislators, we have, I know, I have personally rallied with, um, our educators at the state capitol for higher pay every year for I don't know how long, and to sit here and have, uh, this, these funds available and not do the one thing that we can do and have the information to know what that is, I think, is such a disservice. So I want the teachers to know that, you know, I know I got a lot of emails too about why aren't you, uh, supporting bonuses for our teachers? I want our teachers to know, and our staff to know, I wholeheartedly support you, which is why I am going to keep fighting that you get, you know, the salary that you deserve. And right now, with the, the funds that we have available, I, I, I think the board's action is, is, uh, not a good one.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel, then Ms. Campson, and then Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. The needs of our school division are enormous. To solve them with one budget cannot happen. We had a presentation by our superintendent that addresses social workers, attendance technicians, psychologists, capital improvements, maintenance, air conditioning, ventilation, things that have been neglected year after year after year, not because there isn't the desire to invest in it, but because the funding is not adequate. When you look at our budget and you see how much the locality contributes compared to other localities, we are not there. We do get more federal funding because we have students with greater needs. Our society does not prioritize children, and that is the fact. And we are here to scrape the bottom of the barrel as Virginia citizens for what our General Assembly is deeming is our most precious resource. And we are bickering amongst ourselves to try to pay our teachers, our nurses, our drivers, our, our food industry what they need, and they are the most important persons in the pipeline right now. Dr. Birdsong's budget is extremely strong. She has answered many questions, and to put forth ideas that we don't have data, that we are being reckless, that we are being uninformed, I'm not going to have that. We have the opportunity to look at the information that we have. Can we do better? Yes. Mr. Jordan, I agree. I think that having the two-by-two ahead of time to present the budget to us, explain it, lay it out, that's a, that's actually a great idea. That kind of answers, gives us the ability to kind of receive it. And I think that we can go forward with this. This appreciation bonus is money that we cannot, it's one-time funds. We cannot count on it year after year after year. So as appropriate, we are investing it back into the individuals who are face-to-face with our children, the $2,500. I'm going to vote yes for it, and I know that our budget is not the answer to all of the compression that has come on year after year after year. But I am looking at Dr. Birdsong right now, and I know that she is committed and she holds herself accountable to addressing this, and her commitment is in black and white as the first step of the $2 million. And her team knows how serious we are about making sure that this gets addressed in the next four years. So I, I want to say that the commitment is strong and that we are taking action and that we value our employees, and this is not reckless behavior. This is us trying to rebuild crumbling high schools, redo years of construction that has not gotten done, and we are trying to- redo years of construction that has not gotten done. And we are trying to, just like.
Correct, correct the steps.
One step at a time. We just cannot do it in one fell swoop. I wish we could.
Thank you.
Are we voting yes?
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Camson.
I, I think that it's unfair that we're attacking this bonus. You know, it, it's, the, the bonus is for what's happened this past year with our current staff. It's not for what's been happening for the last twenty years. I'm certainly, I've already made my position. I don't know how I feel about the compression business. But, but that should not keep all of our current employees who are working in these schools during a pandemic from getting a bonus that recognizes the current people. We can't, we can't punish or take away from the current people that working. This touches every single employee in our district. And so, I will definitely be voting yes to give every single person in our district a bonus.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jordan?
Yes, um.
We're gonna wrap it.
Madam Chair.
Okay, I'll give Mr. Ralston one minute. Go ahead.
In the, uh. In the recommendation that we have for the, uh, bonuses, can you explain, uh, to the board the source of the funding that's being used to, uh, provide the bonus?
Yes.
All right. My question was to, uh, Dr. Martin.
Pardon me. I'll keep my mouth closed at once.
Gladly. Why are you asking me this?
Because it's the board's determination. I'm trying to make sure, since we, we just took some action. And I'm trying to make sure as a board that we are clear on what it is that we're voting on and the source of the funds that we're using.
They were the, um, from what I, what I understand, we've talked about this. It's the un, the unappropriated funds from vacancies.
For the current budget, the, what I was just asking Mr. Jenkins about. Yeah. So, um, um, I'm voting no. I think we could do a bonus. I think we have enough money if we're gonna do a bonus in the absence of compression that we could make it five thousand dollars. We have money to do more. And so, if we're going to be focused on bonuses versus structural balance and putting, uh, employees on the, on the correct step, then why not take all of the projected twenty million dollars and do as big of a bonus as we can? So, I'm voting no, because I think based upon the projected surplus of twenty million dollars, we could do even better because we love and care about our employees and want to give them a bonus prior to April eighth. So, I would recommend that we do more than twenty-five hundred dollars. That we consider doubling it.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Ralston.
Yeah, my one minute. Um, I do, I do know that, you know, the compression, compression is not going anywhere. Okay? As a matter of fact, dealing with compression can actually create more compression. The situation I was in, we, we dealt with compression in organizations that I worked. And once we got all the compression straight, we started paying new employees more, which messed up the compression. For example, we might start employees starting out at seventy thousand, and there are people at the fifteen-year mark making seventy thousand. So, I mean, we've got it all straight. But then, if you start out with paying more to teachers, and I can tell you already, there's a projection that we are gonna have to pay more for teachers come twenty-twenty-five because there's gonna be a mass exodus of teachers in twenty-twenty. I mean, it's already being projected. I mean, retiring in twenty-twenty-five. A lot of the retirement happens on those zero and five years. So, we already know in, it's gonna be. And with that, we know that we're gonna have to pay teachers more. And so, even with dealing with compression issues, and we start paying teachers quote-unquote sixty thousand dollars, you just messed up your whole compression thing already. And we know that's gonna happen. So, I definitely think they need the, um, the bonus. And I also think it would be a grave error on my part to allow us, in terms of my vote, to use one-time money for permanent raises when we don't know what the economy is gonna do. Because there's nothing worse than give teachers permanent raises and have to take it back or have to, um, fire people. I mean, that would be the worst situation. And also, in closing, in my one minute, is that as I talk to teachers, and not only teachers in Norfolk, but across the country, their biggest issue is not money. It's some other variables. And I'm, when I'm going through that, there are other variables that teachers also have issues with. And money is not number one. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay. Um, so we have a motion on the table.
Call the question.
Um, Ms. Tanner, please call the question. Basine?
Again, I support bonuses. I support higher salaries, but I am voting no.
Camson?
I.
Blanton?
I.
Gabriel?
I.
Jordan?
Nay.
Ralston?
I.
Martin? Can I yell yout louder than you?
I.
He must be heard. He sat so quietly.
And I'm a teacher.
Okay, up next we have seven point zero five appropriation of unassigned fund balance and revenue share, sharing true up for, from fiscal year twenty-twenty-one.
Dr. Gabriel, I mean, not Dr. Gabriel, but Dr. Martin, it's getting late. Um, I moved.
Getting late.
Oh, so we got a resolution. Don't worry.
Yeah. Yes, one for the unassigned, one for the true up.
So, Dr. Martin, resolution of the School Board of the City of Norfolk, resolution approving the request of the City Council for reappropriation of eleven point five million in reversion funds to the School Board of the City of Norfolk. Whereby, whereas by law, monies left unexpended, unexpended by the School Board Division, School Division, by the fiscal year referred to the localities, and whereas unassigned fund balance in Norfolk Public Schools on June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one was eleven, eleven million, two hundred, one hundred ninety-six thousand, and whereas the balance is a result of the combination of additional revenue beyond the amount, um, budgeted and budgetary savings accomplished during the fiscal year twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and whereas provision of the City of Norfolk's revenue allocation policy permits funds that would otherwise revert to the city be re, be appropriated for the use of the School Board of the City of Norfolk. Whereas on February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two memorandum from the Superintendent in Norfolk Public Schools outlines reasonable and realistic recommendations for the use of unassigned fund balance. And whereas the, whereas it is imperative to augment the School Division's capital improvement plan, CIP, to better equip Norfolk Public Schools to address the pressing needs of its aging infrastructure. And whereas the superintendent's recommendation in, uh, in the aforementioned memorandum include allocating eight million, six hundred and forty-four thousand toward the CIP for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three to underwrite physical school improvements. And whereas the superintendent's recommendation in the aforementioned memorandum also includes recommendation to allocate two million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars to the general fund operating budget as a contingency account for unforeseen circumstances of Norfolk Public Schools may encounter. And now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Norfolk approves on this date on March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, the submission for a formal request of the City Council for the reappropriation of eight million, six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for the purposes of augmenting the CIP fiscal budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and to provide two million, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety, uh, two hun, two million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-six in the fiscal year for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three general fund operating budget as a contingency to address unforeseen circumstances. So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
May I have discussion, please?
Yes, go ahead. Notice again. Yeah, we'll, we'll keep it quick. Go ahead.
I have a question. So, well, several questions. Uh, first one, the, uh, contingency account for use is determined by the superintendent of schools. So, um, that means, so like, we get the financial report and we have, uh, budget transfers like we did right now, did earlier today. Budget transfers over a certain amount come to the board for action. It, in this contingency account, what, what is it that, so this would be what, an account that the superintendent of schools would have of two point five million to spend as the superintendent sees fit without any board oversight? Can you explain? Explain to, to anyone?
Well, this is what I'm.
Am I allowed to talk?
You're allowed to talk. I, I was gonna say how I remember it.
Okay. So, so yes, certainly the board has, uh, authority o, over the budget. And anything that we would utilize the funding for, it would be transparent, as it always is in our monthly financial reports. And so, Mr. Jenkins, if you wanna provide any additional detail that is, is needed.
If you can, if you, could you just explain why the contingency fund is needed versus it being in the, in the, in the budget? I mean, why, why do we need a two point five million dollar superintendent of schools contingency fund?
Because we don't, we, we didn't know we were gonna have this pandemic. But here we are, two years later. I just wanted some pushing to be able to, if there's an emergency situation that I need to address, if for whatever reason, children are, you know, we engage in remote learning again, and that is going to cost additional funding, I need to have something that I can depend on for emergency situations that I can't foresee.
Versus being able to just come to the budget and ask for an amendment? Come to the board and ask for an amendment, amendment of the budget?
Exactly. This is what I'm recommending.
My, my other question is the three million dollars for Maury High School rebuild or renovation. Is this three million dollars just for Maury? Or it, it says three million dollars for Maury High School rebuild or renovation. Then it says NPS will apply the amount to the school rebuilding program. So, is this three million dollars for the school rebuilding program? Or is this specific for, for Maury?
This is the three million dollars that you asked about during the last meeting when we talked about the reversion funding. This is the same three million dollars.
Well, I just want, could you just state, this is the three million dollars for the overall rebuilding and renovation fund?
I think it, we've shared with the board previously on several occasions that it's going to cost about a hundred and fifty million to e, either renovate or rebuild Maury High School. We came to the board, I believe it was in October. There was a capital improvement plan that was, um, information was provided to the board around that. Within that plan, um, outline was three million dollars that we were committing to with reversion funds to address the renovation or rebuilding of Maury. And I think it was, again, it was discussed today. So, that's the three million dollars.
So, it is for Maury. And then this three million?
And that's also in the memo that I gave you. That was the first, yeah, three billion for Maury High School rebuild or renovation.
Right, that's what I was asking, because it ends with will apply to the school rebuilding program. So, this three million dollar commitment, based upon the actions that we've taken, is this one time or has the board just voted somewhere along the way to commit three million dollars a year of unexpendent funds to the school rebuilding program? And if so, how, if we have, how long have we done that?
And again, Mr. Jenkins went over this during the last meeting, I believe it was for ten years, Mr. Jenkins, that it was for ten years.
Were you just, I'm sorry, were you just asking about the commitment of three million of reversion funds every year for ten years?
The board, if I understand what Dr. Burtsong just said, the board's through its actions tonight has committed three million dollars a year for the next ten years.
Not tonight. Three million from this plan, Mr. Jordan. Three million of the, um, reversion funds from twenty-one.
No, what I, what I understood is, what I was asking a moment ago, I, when you said ten years, I thought you were saying that the board has committed itself to setting aside three million dollars a year for the next ten years out of unexpendent funds as, to support the school rebuilding program.
That is what was presented to the board, I believe, in October, was it, Mr. Frayley? In October, yes.
So.
But I didn't hear that in the resolution.
Yeah. We have to vote on it annually. There's a plan that's been presented to us, but we have to vote on an individual budget annually.
Right.
And so, we haven't, we can't say that we're gonna do something for ten years.
So, so the, because I didn't hear it in the resolution that we would be committing to three million dollars over the next ten years.
Well, if you, if you.
It's in the budget.
If you, if you recall, this is the question I raised earlier.
Yeah.
That what the, what it said earlier was that the, there was a proposal from the city manager. In the email that I sent and the response that I got back was that the, the city manager proposed that the school board commit to three million dollars a year over ten years of using its annual, uh, unexpendent balance for school construction.
Yes.
And that, so, so based upon the city manager's proposal that we've never seen, but based upon that proposal, we are committing to three million dollars a year for the next ten years. Because what I got back as an answer was that the city manager said, if the board doesn't do it, then we're not gonna be able to get new schools. That's what I received.
I, I, I don't, I don't recall it the same way, but what I'm, what I'm clarifying right now is that through this resolution that Mr. Clayton just read, we are not committing three million dollars annually in reversion funds for the next ten years.
Okay.
We are, we are only talking about twenty-twenty-one, which is stated in the resolution.
Okay, I just.
Because I agree with you. I wanna have that discussion. I agree with you. It's not good practice because it works against our goals of trying to fill positions. And if we're not filling positions that we should, that we're budgeting for, I, it's a whole discussion we can have.
Okay, so in my, uh, email two by two that you were copied on, the answer that I got was the following. The city manager's proposal to use a portion of reversion funds on the rebuilding effort is consistent with the policy, referring to our funding formula policy. During the last several years, we have operated with sizable fund surpluses that far exceed the city manager's proposal. Haven't seen the proposal. COVID-nineteen and related tightening of the labor market are primary causes of the very large surpluses of the past three years. We cannot expect or rely on large surpluses indefinitely into the future. The reason we agreed, we, not the board, the reason we agreed with the city manager's proposal to use a portion of the reversion is because of the dire state of many school facilities. If we proceed without using reversion funds, fewer new schools will be built, will be built. City staff project there will be two hundred and fifty million dollars available over the next decade, including the thirty million dollar of reversion funds. If the reversion funds are not available, there will be two hundred and twenty million for rebuilding. Contributing to the effort allows for one additional elementary school in today's dollars. The school board's options are to contribute towards the rebuilding or accept that fewer new schools will be built. So, it says a decade, it says thirty million dollars, that's thirty, that's ten years times three million. And it says that the staff agreed to the city manager's proposal that the board has not seen, as far as we know. When I called a council member to ask them if they had any discussion over it, they don't recall it. So, I'm just saying it's, it's mixed messages is what's being sent here.
We went over this.
Yep. And, and matter of fact, the same thing came up at the meeting. And I actually went back to the November meeting and gave you the slide and the slide number.
I understand that.
Because as a board, and I also talked about will of the board, that the board took action in July to direct the superintendent to continue those conversations with the city manager to come up with a plan. They came back and gave us a report in November, which then went from five years to say that we could look at ten years. And that was what was on the slide down there. And I pointed it out. So, the plan has been presented to us on the basis of what the board has directed the superintendent to do. So, I really feel like this particular point, we splitting hairs. Uh, that's my personal opinion. I feel like we're splitting hairs on this thing. The soup, the, uh, three million dollars was already, it had been presented to us back in November as a funding plan for capital improvement for, for new schools and as well as deal with some of the other issues that we had. So.
This is the one time.
But it's based upon. It's a one time, and we're gonna have to vote on it every year.
This is, this is the one time three million.
Yeah.
It's based upon operational expenses. So, had we, for example, just voted to give all employees, uh, put everybody on the, on the right step, we wouldn't end up with ten million and twenty million dollar surpluses because we would have been compensating our employees. And as was mentioned earlier, we can't predict downturns and so forth and all those types of things. I'm saying to you that whatever it is that we think we authorize the superintendent to do in terms of come back with a plan, that it is the superintendent, I thought. in terms of coming back with a plan, that it is, the superintendent, I thought, say that we are committed to $3 million a year. I hear.
I did not hear that in the resolution. I do not see it in the resolution.
We aren't committed. So whatever it is, in that letter that gets written to the city council, please let's be clear, if it's, if we're saying we're just doing $3 million this year, and not for the next 10 years, and that each year needs to come back for, uh, board review, please get that in writing, so the board can be on the same page.
Can you, Rudward, says 2020, 2021, or 2021?
This is the unassigned fund balance for Norfolk Public Schools on June 30th of 2021, which was $11,200,000 and $196. Again, I think we're missing that point, that there's $3 million that's being committed to this, but there's also another $2 million that we also identified was, was being addressed to the compression and the, so that's $5 million there. So I don't, I, I just hate it when it's, when I feel like misinformation or not the full picture's put out there. I'm not gonna say misinformation.
I don't mean to.
So, but, um, I like the, it's 11:49, I like to call the question.
Ms. Tanner, call the question.
But you're gonna take a vote on the question.
Basine?
Just to be clear, what, what is it that we're doing? Are we voting on, uh, in the discussion?
No, the resolution.
Well, we gotta close the debate first. You gotta vote on the discussion.
We didn't time the discussion.
Normally, we just have a gentleman's thing, and we just call the question. But technically, it takes two thirds
Two thirds, like we do.
in order to close the debate, and that's what we ought to be doing.
All right, so let's vote to close the debate and move on.
Just take a vote on closing the question.
Can I get a, um, a motion to close the debate?
I did. I call the question.
Was that Gabriel the second?
Yes.
Okay. Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Rousen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, now can you, um, can you please call the question for, uh, the resolution?
Basine?
I have very little confidence in what is before me, and so I'm voting no.
Discussion has been eliminated. Is it an aye?
I am voting no.
Close discussion.
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
No.
Rousen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Chair, um, resolution of the school board of the city of Norfolk, resolution approving a request of the city council for the appropriation of 8.1 million and access to city revenue allocated to the school board of the city of Norfolk. Whereas the city council considers its essential to provide, um, predictable, objective means of allocating local revenues while providing sufficient funding to meet the strategic goals of both the city of, city of Norfolk and Norfolk Public Schools. And whereas the city council on May 22nd, 2018, adopted a local revenue allocation policy and directed proper city officials to take all necessary actions to implement the policy. And whereas local revenue allocation policy, including a provision that allocates 29.55% of specified local city revenue to the city, to Norfolk Public Schools. And whereas local revenue allocation policy includes a true-up provision stating that all excess revenue will be allocated in the same manner as similar revenues were appropriated in the recently ended fiscal year. And whereas the city, uh, officials of the city of Norfolk have determined that Norfolk Public Schools' share of excess local revenue for the year that ended in June 30th, 2021, was $8,138,185. And whereas the city of Norfolk's revenue allocation policy includes a provision in which the school board of the city of Norfolk may request such true-up, uh, funds permit, uh, permits to one-time expenditures. And whereas on February 25th, 2022, memorandum of the superintendent of Norfolk Public Schools includes a recommendation to utilize such true-up funds to address rising costs of capital projects. And now therefore be resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk approves on this date, March 16th, 2022, the submission of a formal request to the city council for appropriations of $8,138,185 for the purposes of augmenting the CIP budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Call the question.
Second.
Ms. Tanner, go ahead.
Basine?
Nay.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Rousen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Whoa, you trying to out yell him?
What's up?
Now we're voting on the resolution. We just ended debate.
That was the resolution. We didn't have.
Take another vote.
Wait, wait, wait. Please, 706.
That was unclear.
That's what we're voting on.
I thought we were voting on the resolution.
This is voted to close debate. We are now taking a vote on the actual resolution.
For 706?
Yes.
I don't think people knew that, but.
Oh, I, I, I didn't mean to say.
Because we didn't have any debate.
Take a vote on the actual resolution.
Go ahead, Ms. Tanner, call the question.
Well, just, just appeal the ruling of the chair. I guess I'm trying to understand. Is, I respect Mr. Clanton and his parliamentary procedure, uh, master skills. I'm just trying to get clear, is, is he our parliamentarian also? Because, because.
Registered parliamentarian.
Mr. Jordan, Mr. Jordan.
I'm addressing the chair.
No, I'm addressing you, because you're addressing me as a member of this board.
I'm addressing the chair.
So you said it was two thirds, you got a two thirds, okay? There, there, that's, that's the inquiry, but I'm not the parliamentarian for the board. But if I am offering information, now I've served as your parliamentarian for your state association, where you serve as president.
Okay.
Okay.
No, that's, that's not my, my question was, Madam Chair.
Order of order, there has been a call for the question. Move to a vote. You are out of order.
Uh, I appeal the ruling of the vice chair.
It's not my ruling.
Well, it must be, you're the one that made them.
What, can you clarify right now? What, what are we calling into question? We're, we're voting on the resolution right now.
We're voting on the one thing, right?
Resolution.
So we just, we previously.
This is the true-up, the, um.
The true-up, oh, I thought.
This is the excessive, the, um.
I, I think I got confused, because it was under one number, wasn't it?
They combined it.
Taxes, revenues, yes.
So we're voting on the true-up, right.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We shouldn't have meetings at midnight.
Basine?
Aye.
I don't want to vote on that. I'll say something.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay, I wouldn't.
Rousen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Okay.
So now we're going to 7.06.
7.06, no, oh, yes, 7.06. Who has the, Ms. Tanner, you have that resolution, don't you? For the masking. Can you read that, please?
We're doing 7.06. What, what, I thought we're doing 06.
Wouldn't we adjust to board docs?
On board docs, it does say the mask.
You have to follow the board docs, because we switched it around. So it's 7.06 for mask requirements for staff, school transportation.
Doing masks now?
Can't look at your colorful one. You gotta look at board docs.
Okay. Um, so is it the mask one, the mask requirement?
Mask requirements.
Because I thought the mask was 7.07.
I did too.
And 7.06 is.
7.07 is educational facilities planning recommendation.
7.06 is the right.
The educational facility, facilities planning.
7.06, and then 7.07 was the mask.
Okay, I can switch it around, that's not a problem.
That's okay, we're, we're gonna, the, we're going to make some decisions around the educational facilities planning recommendation, um, and we are separating them out, so, right?
No mask.
No mask. I said mask the first time, okay.
What about mask was a seven?
Mask.
It's 07. So we're skipping 06?
You're switching it around.
So I have masks as 06 on here.
I have 06 as the.
On board docs, you have 7.06, you have 7.05 appropriation, but you just did 7.06.
Ms. Tanner, will you please read the resolution on the mask?
And that's 7.07.
Mask requirements for staff slash school transportation.
Okay, and that is 7.07 on board docs. If you need me to switch it, I need to know that.
No, just go ahead and, um.
Whereas the governor signed into law effective March 1st, 2022, Virginia Code Section 22.1-2.1, which among other things makes it the choice of each parent whether their child, a student in this local division, should wear a mask for protection against the spread of COVID-19 while on property owned or controlled by the local school board. And whereas the school board is legally constrained to abide by the new law or face unspecified consequences at the direction of the governor, the Virginia Attorney General, the Virginia School Board, the Virginia Department of Education, in pursuant to private lawsuits. And whereas the Center for Disease Control, CDC, has, has also eliminated the federal requirement that students must wear masks on school buses. And whereas the CDC has further reduced requirements and advice regarding masking against COVID-19, generally due to current reduced dangers of infection. And whereas the city of, whereas the city, Norfolk City Manager has eliminated COVID-19 masking requirements in city buildings effective March 18, 2022, now therefore be resolved by the school board of the city of Norfolk, Section 1, that beginning on and after March 1st, 2022, pursuant to Virginia law, students will not be required to wear masks as protection against the infection and spread of COVID-19 while on property owned or controlled by the school board. Parents need make no special election on behalf of their child to exclude them from the masking requirement, but should they choose to do so, no explanation for the election need to be. Section 2, that beginning on the effective date of this resolution, students will not be required to wear masks as protection against the infection and spread of COVID-19 on school buses. Section 3, that beginning on the effective date of this resolution, no other persons, including but not limited to officers and employees of the school board, contractors, volunteers, parents, and visitors, are required to wear masks as protection against the infection and spread of COVID-19 on property owned or controlled by the school board and on school buses. Section 4, that parents with students in the Norfolk Public Schools and anyone else are encouraged to decide for themselves, based on the latest Center for Disease Control guidance, whether to continue to require their children to wear masks or wear masks themselves when on property owned or controlled by the school board and on school buses to protect their children from the infection and spread of COVID-19. Section 5, that the school board and superintendent will continue within the limits imposed by Virginia law to follow the Center for Disease Control's guidance as reasonably practicable regarding mitigating the danger of infection and spread of COVID-19 in public schools and on school buses. Section 6, that the superintendent is hereby authorized when circumstances due to changing conditions regarding COVID-19 require it to impose, to impose masking requirements, notwithstanding this resolution on a temporary basis. Enacting pursuant to this subsection, no later than the next special or regular school, regular board meeting thereafter, the superintendent must report on it to the school board. Section 7, that because the city manager has acted effective March 18, 2022, to eliminate COVID-19 masking requirements in all city buildings, including the building at 800 East City Hall Avenue in Norfolk, a portion of which is used as the school administration offices, the elimination of masking requirement governing the school administration offices shall be effective from and after March 18, 2022. And Section 8, that this resolution shall be effective from and after its passage, except those effective as of March 1st and March 18. Shall repeal all previous motions or resolutions concerning masking on school property or school buses to protect against the infection and spread of COVID-19, and shall be effective until such time as the board votes to repeal it.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the, um.
I move for adoption, Madam Chair.
Masking resolution, okay. Can I get a second? Dr. Gabriel seconded. Please call the question, Ms. Tanner. Did you want a discussion? Go ahead.
As a result of this, will the board be moving back to the dais with no, with mask optional?
I would like to move back to the dais.
At the next meeting?
Does anyone oppose?
I'm just.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
Basine?
Oh, did you have another? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I appreciate the discussion that we had in, um, closed session with regards to the masking. And I will just say that, um, as a physician who treats children in the emergency room and offers guidance, COVID-19 is still with us, so is flu, so is parainfluenza, so is human metapneumovirus, so are all kinds of other things. However, as I stated in closed session, the horse is out of the barn. People are ready to make decisions based upon the actions that they have taken, whether or not they feel that they have been responsible, that is, whether or not they vaccinated, whether they feel that they're high risk. Our rates have decreased, but I don't see us as a board right now fighting, uh, what is being done all around us in order to maintain, um, the masking. And so while every individual, uh, parent is able to put a mask on their child and send them to school with a mask, and while every employee can still wear a mask in school, I believe that at this point in time, the, the horse is out of the barn. So I will be voting in support of this resolution.
Okay. Ms., um, Basine, and then we'll hear from Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. As I stated, uh, at the last meeting, for me, this is, you know, as Dr. Gabriel just said, we are very much still in this pandemic. We have a group of children that are ineligible for the vaccine. We have low vaccination rates among our school age population, which continues. And the law doesn't prohibit us from requiring masking of the adults and on school buses at this time. So for me, I think I am not voting in support of, uh, making masks optional for the adults and on school buses for that reason, um, at least until the end of the school year. So I vote no.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Ms. Johnson, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to say that, um, even though we did, or the mask mandate was lifted at effective March 1st, I've noticed that in our schools, a lot of the students, at least, given the option, even though some are going unmasked, many of them are still choosing to mask up, which I greatly appreciate, especially because like, a lot of us in high school too are, you know, some of us are legally adults, and we, you know, our parents are like, you know, do as you police type situation. But I am greatly appreciative that a lot of the students are still choosing to mask. It's, and I thought it would be like a 50/50, but it's definitely more of a 75/25, so that's nice to see.
So while, while it's not mandatory, it is voluntary.
Which is true, yes.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, I had mentioned during our, I think I can say this, during our closed session discussion, that I was kind of either way, but I do have one, one data question, if anybody can, can tell me. Any, any updated information on the impact of what the rates are in, uh, what we define as the African-American community that's been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19? Any ideas on where the numbers are amongst?
I just looked at the CDC, um, I know Ms. Basine sent a link out and, on email. And so when, when I looked, of course, it was just our, our region was low. And if you look at our demographic, you know, being mostly African-American, you know, we have a majority African-American, um, population, so I would assume low.
I would look at the hospital admission data. I would look at, I would look at the hospital admission data, and, and if I can get that information from you, I will, for you, I will share it with you. Because of the reasons that I stated in the closed session.
Yeah, I just know.
I think we'd all like to see it.
I just know over time, it's been disproportionately impacting, uh, African-Americans. And, um, um, like Ms. Johnson mentioned, you know, when I've visited schools, I see the, the mask amongst the children. As I understand this, this is really dealing with the, with the adults. So I think I'm gonna vote no, uh, because I'd just like to have that data and air on the side of caution, um, for the rest of the year. But if data comes back, then I hope we can potentially revisit it based upon that data. So thank you, Dr. Gabriel, and thank you, Dr. Martin, and Ms. Basine for your feedback.
Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Tanner, call a question.
Uh, Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Rousen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay. All right, so, um, last on our agenda is, um, educational facilities planning recommendations, and we're breaking it out as requested by Mr. Jordan by school.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move that the board approve the recommendation of moving, uh, Easton Preschool to Fair Lawn Elementary School.
Okay, can I get a second?
Effective September.
A second.
Wait, wait, wait.
My recommendation is that we. My recommendation is that we approve the, well, my motion is, is that we approve the recommendation of moving Easton Preschool to Fairlawn.
Thank you for repeating that for me, Ms. Split.
I seconded. Who seconded? Okay, Ms. Bassin seconded. Any discussion? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner, call the question.
Okay, comment. Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Planton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Okay.
Dr. Martin? I move that the School Board of the City of Norfolk adopt the School Division's Education and Planning Consultant Cooperative Strategies recommendation to consolidate Toward Park Elementary School for the 2023-24 school year and repurpose Roughness Middle School to a 3-8 school in the 2023-2024 school year with a theme program and offer division-wide choice seats.
Would you like to second that?
No, because I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't know you had determined who had the floor.
Oh, will he?
I second.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ralston.
Discussion?
Yep. Any discussion?
Yes, I have.
So I'd like as the maker of the motion to speak first. I have visited, I've spoken with parents, teachers, visited sites in regards to this and looked at the data. Looked at the budget book for one, running regards to Toward Park Elementary School. It shows about 130 some odd students that are there, and I know that at some point in time, there was a decision to split the schools, to have Toward Park to have 3 to 5, and as well as PB Young to house a pre-K to 2nd grade. I also know that, a letter was requested, it was actually presented and stated by the Superintendent before this Board, and Mr. Jordan actually requested to get a copy of it, thank you, because we all got a copy of it, where there was an official request from the City of Norfolk for that particular piece of land there. It's under, I think we're spending about $3 million on that one school for about 139 individuals that are there. I think that when we talk about choice, and I know, Mr. Jordan, you and I sat on a community call at Lindenwood yesterday, and I asked the question about options, and there are many different ways to diversify our community. And some of those are about creating choice seats, some about rezoning. And when we look at this particular opportunity, I think there's an opportunity to create a new program, any high concentration of poverty when we talk about that particular community there, and to create a world-class program where we learn, because of the vision, based on February 4th presentation, I asked the question about the timing. Why March? And that was to give enough time to allow the administration to work with their professionals to come back with a theme program that would create a choice seat opportunity for students. At the end of the day, for me, it is all about what is in the best interest of students, also listening to our parents, and what is going to be the best for their children. And when we look at that, I think that there's an opportunity to give those students who are there, also for the overall community, because my understanding, the reason why the request for the school is, is to be able to move the Hunt and YMCA to that location and to create a retention pond there where we know in that community there is flooding. So it benefits all of our students and everyone who's in that area. So I would encourage my colleagues to vote yes on this particular item, as I have different opinions on others.
Discussion, go ahead.
There have been zero, to my knowledge, zero communications with parents and stakeholders in the Toward Park, Roughness, PB Young, Calvert Square, Roughness Attendant Zone footprint with the prior to the recommendation, part of the recommendation, zero. And to me, I was comfortable with the Fairlawn Eastern presentation, because I think there have been community dialogues and board public hearing in the affected communities. So I was comfortable with that. Zero on this recommendation. I think it is outside of the policy and regulations to do this. I've also spoken with parents and others, and, you know, I often walk through Toward Park and Young Park and Calvert Square in the morning, sometimes in the evening, like when I used to walk the School Board meetings and walk home. And one of the concerns that I've heard that we haven't really addressed, because we don't have a plan yet, if you watch children walk to Roughness today from Young Terrace and Calvert Square and the remaining that are left at Toward Park, right now, they're all middle school students. And the path that they walk is crosses several, at least two major thoroughfares, Bramleton Avenue and Toward Drive. There's, the students don't necessarily go to the crossing guards, they don't necessarily go to the crosswalk. Also, if you stand and watch dismissal sometimes, like I drove through it today on the way here.
Stand and watch what?
Dismissal from Roughness.
Dismissal, okay.
Mm-hmm. You know, I see children being children. We're now talking about without a plan at this point in time, if nothing else changes, 3rd graders, 4th graders, 5th graders walking to Roughness with 6th graders, 7th graders, and 8th graders across this thoroughfare, or these thoroughfares in this path, where we've had zero conversations with parents about how they feel about that. So I just think, again, it is irresponsible. I'm all for choice seats, everybody knows that. I'm all for diversity, everybody knows that. But in the ed planning process, we were also looking at feeder patterns and feeder pathways. And so I just think, again, for the School Board to accept the recommendation and to even vote on a recommendation, when there's been zero known conversations with parents, it's just anti our goals, anti our accountability system, anti what I often hear we say we believe when we often say that parents aren't engaged and we want them to be trusted partners in the system. So there are many other reasons that I don't think this is ready, but just the mere fact alone that we would even consider this when there have been no conversations with parents and no specific public hearing by this Board in that community, again, I just think it's irresponsible and unfair and is not equitable and is not opportunistic. So absolutely, strongly, I'm opposed to this recommendation at this time. After community conversations would be different, but not now.
Go ahead, Mr. Bassin.
Is that an accurate statement? Have there been any community engagement with the family, you know, that we just might not be aware of?
So to be clear, Mr. Sturtz presented the plan to the Board, and during his presentation, he shared with you why there was the need to look at Toward Park and to, I'm sorry, yes, Toward Park, and to make some decisions around that. Within that plan, there was also some information shared about community engagement if the Board decided to move forward with this recommendation. So I'm surprised right now that everyone is, well, not everyone, there are members who, for whatever reason now, don't recall that plan. That plan was very public, it was open, it was presented to you, it was posted on Board Docs, you discussed it, and we're here today.
Can you ask if that was a yes or a no?
I didn't understand what you just said. But I'm just trying to clarify whether that has happened or not, because we, these other plans, I do recall, I was there for the presentation and heard all of that, I expressed concern at that time too, as I did with some of the other proposals, including Lindenwood, about not having that community engagement. I think we also don't know what the cost will be, like when we have Lake Taylor School, that proposal included costs of transitioning students over to that school and what that phase-in plan might look like. I'm just using that as an example. So I think there's a lot of unknown factors again here, so I wouldn't, won't be voting in support of it.
So are there unknown factors as cost? Because I think that we've gone over this.
It's not unknown. We've all got a presentation with a timeline here.
I'm not talking about the timeline, I'm talking about the cost.
The timeline is very clear about public engagement, the timeline is very clear about planning. The motion today isn't about moving kids. The motion today is to authorize the administration to begin the planning. We're talking about 23-24, which is two years from now. This is to give the time, give clear direction, which we talk about all the time as a Board, to the Superintendent to come back with a plan. That plan is to be presented back to this Board next planning year, to be sent back in December. And at that time, it would be presented to the Board, this is what we've come up with, this is what we think, and then the Board will still have an opportunity to say, no, this isn't what we want, to be able to continue to have the community engagement, because what do we have an engagement around if we don't know what the program looks like? So this motion today is to just give clear direction to begin the planning, get the folks together, and come back with a complete package, and also learn from some of the things that we've learned from, walk with the community to ensure that what we have that comes back to before this Board in December of 20, of this year, 2022, is a plan that has had community input, is a plan that has taken all these things in consideration, because I think that you would look at not having elementary school kids going at the same time as middle school kids, because they go at different times at school day. So there's a whole lot of different things there, and I don't want the misconception to be placed out there, that the planning isn't being asked for that. My motion is clear. Begin the planning, come back with a plan, make sure you take the necessary steps to ensure the community is involved, and then December, because it's very here, that's when we told them to have that plan ready to bring back to here so that we can have a full discussion about it. This isn't about moving kids today.
I will say, I 100% agree with you, Mr. Jordan. I brought this up when I visited Roughness last, with the principle was, you know, I drive down, I go to work on Tidewater, and I watch those children going across that very wide, what, 3, 4 lane, I mean, it's not even an intersection, I mean, it's, it's just a freeway, and it just terrifies me. So I do think that we, you know, in the planning, need to look at how those children are getting to and from school safely. That's very important.
Very important. And we also know, in terms of projection, that there may only be 50 people in that school in two years.
Yeah.
Or less.
Let's hope not. It's a beautiful building. We need to fill that.
So we know that we're gonna have to make this one. We do know that it might be 50 kids in the school in 2024.
This is gonna be down.
Right, yeah. So we know that, yeah.
All right, any more discussion? All right, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Planton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
No.
Ralston?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Madam Chair? I move that the School Board of the City of Norfolk does not accept the recommendation of the Division's Education and Planning Consulting Cooperative Strategies related to the rezoning of students at Lindenwood Elementary School, Elementary to Taylor Elementary and Willard Model School for the 2022-23 school year.
Can I get a second?
I second.
Thank you, Dr. Ralston. Any discussion? Ms. Campson?
Yes, I'd like to say that I'm disappointed. This Board has, this particular populated Board was created, it's been almost four years, and the last decade, they managed to do five schools, the decade before that, even more, so here we sit.
Ms. Campson, can you please put your microphone closer?
How about I just do this? So I find it disappointing that we're not moving forward to be building our schools and readjusting where we need to, to be able to use our money wisely rather than spending tons of it on declining populations like we have at Toward Park. And we talk about diversity, and we talk about academic achievement, and we talk about safe schools, and those have been big topics since we've come here. So what I'd like to do is just, and this will take one second, is to share the response I've been giving to those people who have contacted me about Lindenwood, and this is my response that will guide what I'll be voting for. I plan to vote for the recommended plan because I strongly feel that this plan is the best option for the children. They will leave a non-diverse, consistently low-performing school housed in a deteriorating building to join accredited schools that are newer and safer and more diverse. And this is exactly what I will say and follow up with the vote, that we talk about diversity, Lindenwood is not the least bit diverse. We talk about academic achievement, they are the consistently lowest performing school in our district, and we talk about safe schools, and their school, we just knocked a third of it down because it's deteriorating so quickly. So I will not, I'll be voting against this. I think I'll be voting against, right, yeah. You messy, threw me off a little bit with the, we will not follow. So, yes, so thank you very much.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Martin. I'm sad that it's 12:30 right now, and we're bringing all of our energy together to discuss this such an important topic, probably one of, well, we had so many important decisions tonight, but this is a difficult decision. I sincerely appreciate all of those who came to speak. I had the opportunity to, I took the opportunity to reach out to many of the individuals who did come to speak, reverends, parents, community leaders, and I just happened to have a visit on the books today at Lindenwood. Didn't realize that this was gonna correspond with that at all, but it was, you know, it was good to go. And, you know, I can't disagree with anything that Ms. Campson says. Academically, the students there, year after year after year after year, it's unaccredited. And what that means is that it's not even hitting proficient rates. The building has mobile units, beautiful, beautiful site, lots of potential there. And I was prepared, last night, before my visit there, to, I was prepared to vote in favor, I wasn't sure how the motion was gonna be proposed, but I was definitely prepared to vote in support of Dr. Bertsong and the Educational Planning Strategy Team, what their proposal was, because I do believe that they are looking at what is in the best interest of the children. And I completely respect what the community has brought forth with the fact that it's historical, has lots of meaning, lots of memory. But at the end of the day, I really want the children to be successful academically so that they can go on to be productive members of society. But when I was at the school today, what was very clear was that these children have undergone quite a bit of transition, not just during COVID-19, but transition also with a lot of different staff members, administrators. And I think that the intentional communication with the families there, which there has been that done, but I think that maybe, I'm just not ready yet actually to move the children yet, after my visit today. I think a little bit more time is needed to do some more deeper explaining to them and with the staff. Transition is hard for children, they kind of tell their own story as to why things are happening. I heard a lot of misinformation, I have to say, the building's getting shut down, they're tearing my building down, they're gonna be building apartments here, a lot of misinformation. None of that would ever, ever. ever cross my mind. But I also don't want them to feel as if we're taking something away from them and that they're not valued. And so while the academic piece is so important, I think that we can probably take a little bit more time with this issue in particular. And then maybe come, come right back to it very soon.
Dr. Ralston?
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Yeah, I've given this much thought also, and I'm hearing my colleagues. And I think I have to share my first thought, and that's the researcher in me. I'm a education researcher. And I know that sending children to another school, particularly underrepresented, just sending them to another school will not help their situation, because they will have low test scores at Taylor. If some things aren't cleared up completely, and I think those things can be cleared up at Lindenwood, the things that we're talking about. If they need extra, you know, social workers, psychologists, whatever we need in that school, stable leadership, I think it can work. But just simply sending some of this population to another school is not gonna help. And I can give you tons and tons of data to show you that it doesn't, when you start looking at the data. So I, I know this school, there's 98% passing rate for everything. And you start looking at pockets of certain populations, they are not passing in a 98% passing school. So I'm very afraid of that. That's what terrifies me about simply, simply thinking that moving them is gonna be the key. That's gonna be, I, I, I can't see that. And I also think that we're saying one thing and doing another, because we're saying, well, the school is decrepit, blah, blah, yet we're saying, well, let's put another group in there. And I don't, I don't get that. I don't know what that looks like in my, I can't, I can't put my head around that to say, it's, it's a dying school, decrepit, oh, nobody should be in there, yet we're looking at the possibility of moving somebody else in there, our most vulnerable kids possibly. So that was, yeah, so that's on my mind. So I definitely will vote for, for this, for this motion. And so, thank you.
I have something to say, but I'll wait till everyone speaks. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson, and then Mr. Jordan.
Oh, I was just gonna say that I'm in agreeance with Dr. Gabriel and Dr. Ralston, how do I pronounce? Ralston, okay. Because not only are these, like, this is a huge transition for the students of Lindenwood, but this will also be a huge transition for the students of Taylor as well. Because these are two different schools, and even though they are all young children, you don't know how they're gonna react and act towards each other, now that they're just both thrown together, and how that's gonna affect the teachers as well. So just piggybacking, piggybacking off of what they said, I think that there should be, like, a little bit more thought put into the process before making this huge decision. Sorry about that. My bad.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, I appreciate the sentiments that have been said thus, thus far. I actually like what I've heard. I wish that this was the conversation like Ms. Campson mentioned that we had had with the Lindenwood parents and community, like we should have. Because then we could have sold this vision, whatever it is that, that we determined that we wanted to do. I wanna make it clear, there's been no discussion on the board that I've been a part of, that simply moving children results in academic performance. We have had data where we show in Norfolk Public Schools that where children start in elementary school and the amount of challenges that those schools face with the lack of adequate resources, that it impacts their trajectory towards on-time graduation. So the discussions that we're having now, I think we should continue to have, the discussions that we're having now, that's what we should be having with Lindenwood, parents and staff, and every other school as we go down this, go down this path. Same principle applies here at Lindenwood for me, as it applied to the previous, previous motion. Also wanna say that I agree with Dr. Ralston in terms of the concerns about the, the resources to upgrade the school, even if the, if we were gonna move Madison students there, or if we were gonna leave Lindenwood students there. So I don't know if the contingency fund allows for that. But right now, I, I think we may have committed much of the funds that we would have available right now, unless the board votes at a future meeting to do some budget transfers or whatever other recommendation, to take care of Lindenwood today. So that we don't end up with the same physical plant that we have now, and that we also don't end up with the number of long-term subs and substitutes that we have now. And that we're also clear about a permanent administrative and leadership team there now. So I am gonna vote in support of the, the motion. My motion would have been to table it. But, but if we are going to keep the children there for however long, then I think we ought to commit to the types of resources that Dr. Ralston just mentioned, which currently is not in the budget that we just approved.
Go ahead, Dr. Bertsong.
Just to be clear, there's never a plan to stop the work on Lindenwood?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, we're, we're gonna move forward with, with.
I'm not clear what that, that meant in the, that meant in the capital improvement plan, you all remember, that what Mr. Fraley gave us, is that even with the plan, talking about building new schools, he had already taken the effort to go ahead and allocate and identify with the needs of each one of our buildings. And even if we had moved with the original proposal, and in moving Madison over there, it would have still done upgrades to the schools, so either way.
I wasn't talking just about the physical plant. I was talking about the, the human resources.
I'm with you. And that's where I like to, to speak to my motion. Very much when this originally was presented, and I've said it from the beginning, I just wanted to do what was in the best interest of children. I did my homework. I listened. I appreciate my colleague, Dr. Ralston, explaining the data and about moving, you know, kids from one location to another. I listened to parents when I attended the Lindenwood meeting, and they raised a concern about 2.6 miles away. And what happens if my child, I need to go get them, and I can't get there. I listened to that. Mr. Jordan, you know, we were on a civic, we were on a civic leak call yesterday, and this isn't new, because I expressed to you and those on that call, that I wasn't gonna support this at this particular moment, that we needed to do more study. And I'm glad for the opportunity, my colleague, Dr. Gabriel, she reached out to me. We did two site visits today. We went to Grand Bay High School, which was already pre-planned, to go take a look there. And then we went to Lindenwood. And when we walked through Lindenwood, one of the things with speaking with the assistant principal and the acting principal there, they, they showed me and showed Dr. Gabriel what could be done. And one of the biggest things, when we got a report maybe about a month or so ago, maybe two months ago, that talked about the attendance at Lindenwood. But then we saw a wall that showed 90% attendance at Lindenwood. And it was a glimmer of hope and the respect that if we put the necessary resources in, we put good leadership in there, we make sure, and we walked and we actually asked the teacher, and they're just totally off the cuff, what could we do from our level to support what you're doing in the classroom? And she showed us how she was doing the data and showing the information. And she was talking about timing and how much time she has. It, it was very refreshing to hear at that level what could happen. And so I was even more resolved, when I came out of the meeting at Lindenwood today, that if we, just like what you're saying, Mr. Jordan, in that respect, there's $2.5 million that's in the contingency fund. There's already things that are there. That money could be used anyway. Next, I don't say we're gonna use all 200, $2.5 million, but this is a contingency thing. We've already adopted, we're coming back. And we need to identify some things to support those students at Lindenwood. We owe that to them. I have shared a, and a report from 2008, where Lindenwood consistently, year after year after year, has been unaccredited. I think that it's time that we take a, a real focus at that, and that we begin to put the resources in there for that particular school. And who knows, later on, as we start talking about reshaping and doing whatever things, it may change. We, we don't know. But I think right now, it's a no. It's a no for me. And to take the time, and also what we've learned, is to continue to listen to the community. I appreciate the voices that have come in there, those who've reached out, and to bring them on as partners at the table, just like what we're doing with, with Tyrell Park, in that respect, as they build that plan. That, that's pulling principal together, leadership, community, everybody around there, to what this program would look like. And I think if we start doing that more, we'll have a better result, and people won't feel surprised. The people will feel as though they're partners in this process.
Ms. Campson, then Mr. Jordan, Ms. Basine. Can we just?
Sorry, my, it's probably behind Lauren's head.
I just wanted to make a quick response. I also do a lot of research and contribute to the research that's done. And, and Ocean View was a good candidate to look at this because when crosstown busing stopped, we went to minority-majority, as, as everyone may remember. And students who were in a, a school in which they were in the majority were able to request to be sent to one of the schools that had been selected to become, become a member of, of a place where they were a minority. And so from Ocean View, we got a busload of kids from Tidewater Park. We got another busload of kids from Young Park and Roberts Park, which is whatever it became, and maybe Ingleside, I don't recall exactly. But the buses were coming, but we had, it was over 100 children, because they're elementary, so you could do three to a seat. So we got over 100 children that showed up that year. And they had been in a continually failing school situation, not making accreditation at that time. They later on did some. And so we brought children that were very behind and very non-proficient. And we looked at it as our responsibility to incorporate them into our school. And they joined into our school. We did what we always do. We did response to intervention. And we were very, we had our eye on every one of those children. We had people in charge of different subgroups that kept their eye on them individually. And they came along fine. 90% plus of our children were, every year, making proficiency, including these children, when they stopped that program 10 years later. I was so sorry to see those families go. They were wonderful in our school. Their children did great. And so it did make a difference. And, and I'm glad to hear what Mr. Clanton is saying about resources coming in and, and everything, because, but that's, maybe because of my history, I watched that school failing, and the state required it to be totally restaffed. So they restaffed the whole school. But they kept a lot of the people, they brought them back when they, they had interviewed them. I don't know all the details. I actually personally requested to have that school, and I was denied. They would not let me go over there. Because I just, we were doing so many successful things. And Ocean View, as we all know, was a very failing school when I became principal, that I wanted to go over there, but they, I didn't get to do that. And what we watched is, we watched it all fall apart a second time. And then, so it's a, I think sometimes schools become so toxic, failing schools become so toxic, that they can't seem to recover from it. And so I think that's something, I mean, I would, I'm, I'm supportive with the will of the board and whatever you decide. But I'd like everyone to keep an open mind, because you, the situations that you see where children are moved in, and we've done that repeatedly in Norfolk, are not necessarily handled correctly. And, and we don't get a positive response. We put them in a school that perhaps is not welcoming. I think the fact that we were so welcoming made a big difference, hard to say. But I just want everyone to keep in mind that my concern here is that I do not want to continue to see yet another generation of children come up from a failing school. I mean, elementary school is, is the foundation for everything. I'll still do with education and their lives. So I, I, I really am very concerned, because I've seen too many times that they were gonna do things at Lindenwood, and they continue to be non-proficient. And, and so I think maybe that influences where I am. But that's why, and, and plus the fact that we cannot continue to, continue to have little tiny schools, can't afford it. But more important is, are we gonna just keep repeating the same mistakes? And I just wanna have that in our mind. But I will certainly support whatever the board decides.
Thank you. But I do wanna say, the, I did get feedback, just based on, you know, we don't wanna force children on each other. But I will say that I recall reading from the other schools, like Taylor Elementary, that they were saying, please bring them here. We would, you know, they were very welcoming. I didn't, I don't remember reading anyone saying, please don't bring them here. I, I, so I just don't want anyone to get the misconception that Taylor Elementary was not willing.
Oh, no, and I would, I would think they would, they'd be very welcoming. The thing is, people just get beaten down so much that the schools don't flourish, because they're just so beaten down and so discouraged. And there has to be a key to that. I don't know that moving, I can't guarantee moving them to another school would make a difference. But spreading them out so that they're not always exposed to failure, spreading the teachers out, so that they're moving into schools that are accredited, makes a difference to revive a teacher who's gotten too discouraged.
Yep. Point well made. Thank you, Ms. Campson. Ms. Basine, go ahead.
Back to me. It's, it's too late. But I appreciate all the conversation. I think you all know how I feel about it. I agree that just moving kids is not enough, and that the resources need to go along with it. One of the questions I had would be, what would then, what would it cost if we were to move it? So, but, since we are not doing that, because all of the resources, we know, we've seen it fail when we've done it, because we haven't provided the supports at the, at the receiving schools. And so we, we know what happens when there's poor planning. So when I say, you know, I wanna see the full plan, I don't mean, you know, just a timeline, or just, you know, that. But, you know, the community engagement around this was a concern. I'm glad to see that some engagement has happened. I would like to see more. And as you said, you know, be real partners in the process. And so I will be supporting the motion.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes, I'm thankful to the parents and stakeholders from Lindenwood who came out to speak. I think their presence made a significant difference in where we are today than where we were on February 4th. And I hope they will continue their engagement, both with the children at Lindenwood, but also holding us accountable as a board. You all may recall, earlier in the year, we had some decisions to make around building leadership. And we, you know, approved the movement of building leadership there. And I just want to bring that up, because I just want us to, as we're dealing with these things, moving forward, that at the time when recommendations come up around staffing, and we have similar conversations about stability, that we don't make one decision in August and September, and then find ourselves here in March, dealing with the consequences of decisions that we make as adults. If there's any feeling going on, the feeling belongs with us as adults, not with children. I think that's important to make sure. I know we're all saying that, but I just think it's important that we reinforce that. And since the original recommendation was to move students, but now it seems like the sentiment of the board is to not do that, I would just like to ask that we have the administration come back. administration come back maybe with at least 30 days to show us what the needs assessment is operationally, academically and physically. And then provide this board the opportunity as soon as possible, no later than June, to devote specific resources that we just talked about that we believe will support academic outcomes. I want us to talk about resources and then hope for it. Based upon all that we said, let's put our budgetary might behind the comments that we made so that we know that the families and children at Lindenwood going into the summer, I don't wanna wait till September, going into the summer can know what to expect in terms of human and physical and support resources that we believe will support the student outcomes that we say that we know and believe that children at Lindenwood can, can do, so.
Thank you.
Final comments on that.
Well, I wanna just share, I'm, I'm gonna bring up the other side of this, the other population of students that are at Madison and I had some serious concerns about moving them.
That's a different motion.
Moving them to Lindenwood.
Madison? Just talking about Lindenwood? You just talking about now moving Madison into Lindenwood?
The program.
Madam Chair, so this is what I was saying earlier, when you all were talking, we can't hear what you're saying.
Oh, I'm just saying, we were focusing on Lindenwood, I felt like we were going into something else.
Well, this is, this is, this was part of moving, moving the children from Lindenwood, but the, but it's also about get, finding a proper, because since we're not, right? It impacts our decision about Madison. And so, what, this is why, this is, this is why I'm voting the way I'm voting, is because when I, I, I definitely want the Madison program put in a different facility. That my concerns around moving them to Lindenwood was that they, while, while I, I don't want them in that building, they deserve a better building. The social structures that are built around that building being that their, their proximity to ODU, the Lambert's, I think it's Lambert's Baptist Church and, and the credit union there and the student organizations that come over and clean up the lawn and help out, that's a structure that I don't think they'd be getting in a neighborhood at Lindenwood. So, you know, there's, so, I just, it goes back to resources and understanding the needs of the, the students that are in there. And, you know, I just don't want them to then move that program and be completely isolated and not have the types of supports that they've been depending on. And yes, maybe they can find new supports wherever they end up moving, but I, I was just very uneasy with, with uprooting a program that is very supported, even though I want them, you know, I don't, I don't think the building is a good enough building, but, but, but that they, that they're moving from a community that's embracing their program, regardless of the building, to a community that I don't, I didn't get the impression at the public hearing that they would, they're very excited about having the alternative program there. So, I will be voting in favor of the motion. That make sense?
It makes sense. I just, Mr. Jordan, I don't want you to feel like I'm ignoring you. I just feel like.
Ignore me on what?
On your, because you were talking about doing something additional and directing to the administration. I just, I would feel better if we put this on the work session in April so that we can have an actual discussion to identify what those things are that need to go at, at Lindenwood and then make something out of that. Because there, it could be a hot pot of different things, but I think that we need to have a little bit more discussion on that one so that we do send a clear direction to the administration on what we'd like to see. Because I do like the idea of coming up with that funding plan would look like by June and having us.
I need to look at the April work session, it is really, there's a lot.
Just, just for clarity, I, I, you know, if I said April, then we say, we didn't give the administration enough time. So, I didn't, wasn't being specific, I was saying at least 30 days. If it's April, I'm all for that. But another thought that just popped in my head before we conclude is if the board would like to provide priority out-of-district transfer opportunities for students at Lindenwood, if they wish to go to Taylor, Willard, Gent, ADL, I think we should provide them with bonus opportunity to attend, just, just as I think we should be doing with the students at Southside Still, since we acknowledge that we have failed to implement that correctly. Let's, let's have that discussion and provide them that choice since we all said we're for choice.
I didn't bring my sleeping bag.
Thank you.
So, are we postponing the rest of the vote?
No, I, I appreciate the idea. I just.
If you think we should have a work.
We need to have a work.
A bigger discussion around it, but we have, we have exhausted discussion around the Lindenwood situation, so we're gonna call the question. Ms. Tanner?
Yes, Bassin. Aye. Campson.
Aye.
Clanton.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Rousen.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Dr. Martin, so we can bring this home. I moved at the school board of the city of Norfolk, does not accept the recommendation of the division's education and planning consultants cooperative strategies related to the relocation of, of the school division's secondary alternative program, education program from Madison to Lindenwood Elementary School.
Kind of a moot point now, isn't it?
I'll second.
Need to document it. Be clean.
Dr. Gabriel, any comments about that? Go ahead.
I would just say that the same effort that we said we're gonna put around Lindenwood, that we put a similar effort around Madison, and I'll reiterate again that we also look at our alternative education programming holistically and think about what outcomes, what supports, you know, all of that. What do we need to have in place with the end in mind? So, I do expect to see that soon.
Good, Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the, the motion. You know, I don't have a lot of empathy for consultants, even though I am one from time to time. But I also think it's, you know, putting, putting all this on, on cooperative strategies, I don't think is fair either in terms of the recommendations that come forward. They work with our staff and, and they ought to be working more with our steering committee, which I think as a board, we need to revisit yet again the role and function of the steering committee and, and get it repopulated and to make sure that the steering committee is engaged in this work and has an opportunity to, to vet. Also on this motion, I think Ms. Bassin just touched on this. So, if we are gonna leave students at Madison for at least another year, as far as I know right now, that we also prioritize supports and resources there. I think we've had some indication that Madison right now is understaffed. And so, I think it also requires some immediate attention, as do many other schools, but at this point, some immediate attention and, and support and that we don't just leave it as is either. So, but I am supportive of the, the motion, just like with Lindenwood. I think we need to attach resources and supports based upon needs assessment and data and act upon that this year, since we know we might have another $10 million in unexpendable funds that we could potentially dedicate to it by the time this, this year is up, if we're not gonna be dedicating more to.
Don't fall asleep on us.
I'm not falling asleep, believe me. I'm wide awake, just, just for the record.
I, I know it's 1:00.
When I leave here on Wednesdays, this is, I'm wide awake up until 1:00 in the morning after our meeting, so I'm wide awake now.
Finish your assignment.
I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Dr. Allison.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, the students in the alternative program are most vulnerable students and I do think they need the most consideration and resources. And I hope we can immediately, I mean, the administration can start looking for alternative places for them. I'm not talking about in two years, but very soon, a suitable, perhaps a suitable place for them and not to put them on hold, they're our most vulnerable. And so, they, they need a lot of care. And I think we may have to make some really quick decisions, but good decisions and decisions that will put them in a really good place, soon, not two years from now, you know.
And that's what I was trying to get at, is to pull them from some of the supports in the community that they have now. It just, and, you know, just, I think it's a, a risk, it's, it's too fragile, puts them in a fra- fragile, you know, place. Not to say that that's not something to be worked on, but I want, I wanna see that, right? I wanna see what the supports would be.
And Madam Chair, to the data and research, it'd be, maybe we could do a, an analysis of students who have been referred to Madison over the past year and see what feeder pattern they, they started with, where they started in elementary school and where they are now in terms of Madison. It might be, be illuminating to us as we continue to talk about feeder patterns and choices and schools and long-term subs and so forth.
All right, wrap it up?
Yes.
Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
All right, Bassin. Campson.
Aye.
Clanton.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Rousen.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Everyone be safe driving home and with that meeting adjourned.
Thank you.